So the first item on the agenda is a meeting with the Green Policy Task Force. We're looking to kind of reboot, for lack of better terms, the Green Policy Task Force. We've got, I don't know, three or four very enthusiastic and talented residents kind of raised their hand and said they wanted to join, which we thought was great. We always need new enthusiastic, talented people. And I think since we hadn't met with the Green Policy Task Force in such a long time, we want to kind of, you know, have the existing members in and find out, you know, talk about your goals, kind of our goals, make sure they're still all aligned, and then figure it out from there. So that's kind of my intro. And with that, if you guys want to come hang out up here underneath the windowsill. I forgot, I was here yesterday, I forgot where you switched your clothes.
Welcome.
Hi there, thank you for having me on your agenda. Is this public recording?
Yes.
So my name is M.J. Wilson, and I currently am the Acting Chair of the Green Policy Task Force, working on a public Green Policy Task Force reboot. And what our agenda was for tonight was to learn more about what the priorities, priorities were for environmental work. And one of the things that we were wanting to have be our guidance is the Climate Smart Communities Certification Action Checklist. This is a New York State program that has a lot of heft behind it and also a lot of tools, a lot of support, and funding. So being in alignment with that, we thought would be a wise move. And it does cover a lot of territories, so.
You know, as you know, you already are, you took the pledge several years ago to be a climate smart community. But what we're talking about tonight is actions that would move that forward, different elements of the pledge, and how that might or might not relate to your current priorities and also your older priorities that set forth in your environmental action plan.
But also it's to give a certain criteria of some sort as well, and maybe use a menu of so many things we can do, of which we've accomplished a few of them. The question was to get a gap analysis to figure out really what kinds of things could we do to get that kind of certain, the color of the thing. And that's obviously going to be the benefit of the village in terms of grant proposals and stuff like that.
Not to be confused with the clean energy communities. So this is climate smart communities, this is older, clean energy communities is newer, different sort of structure certification, but.
And the clean energy communities also have funding available, they need certain criteria, which we probably might not be too far from. We might be pretty close to those criteria to need back funding, and that's up to 100,000. The town of Greberg is applying for a grant for municipal compost education, and they also want to create a municipal food waste compost facility. That's a little bit more complicated, but it's definitely in the queue there, and they're looking to be climate smart community funding for those things.
Climate smart or clean energy?
Oh, clean energy.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, clean energy. Sorry.
I'm going to do the, I try and similar to that, mix it up, I'm still sorry.
Well, we had two words, two words.
It's like, you know, the action.
See, see, and then.
So.
So they're two different initiatives, and we're trying to leave.
Yes, and there are UKs overlapping, and they're both state.
The pledge that we did is more related to climate smart, or it's like a beginning step for that.
Yes, right.
And then that that needs to a certain certification, if certain criteria are met, the climate smart certification, and then back to receive some funds also.
Right.
Okay.
Or in some cases it also gives you higher points for on your application for funding.
So for example, I mean, we were partially there, and we have the LED streetlight version. But we also have facility duty data, and this one's saying that for years now, we've just never analyzed it in terms of what it means in terms of building enhancements.
Does everybody know what that is, the facility duty? I mean, we do, but.
Facility duty for those who don't know, it's a great thing, but it's a piece of software for municipalities that actually is used to track all your utilities on a building, a meter by meter basis. And you can use it to form analyses about, you know, energy usage, and then you can start to project the kinds of building enhancements you want, might want to look at to reduce your energy use.
And this is being used for the buildings?
Yeah.
It's, yeah. So, I mean, the big thing is.
Four years, three, four years?
Four, four years.
It's actually very progressive.
Yeah. You introduced it to us, I believe.
Yeah, because Dobbs Ferry had been using it, started using it, and.
Yeah, we adopted it fairly quickly, maybe within a year. The thing that's interesting, and this is where the conversation gets, you know, a little nebulous, is that I know that Larry in the village has been undertaking a certain kind of energy enhancements. You know, there's been the restoration work that's actually fixed a lot of the window problems, there's been the automated electric, did you have automated switches in there? Or just, you know, or just the conversion to better efficiency?
We did interior building LED fixtures, and we did, of course, the streetlights.
All right. So there's things that have been individually done, but there's not, there's a lot of other things that could be part of a gap analysis that say what it would take to get to the next stage.
That's great that you have that data now, and that will really help you pinpoint facilities that could be the high priorities.
And just, you know, the environmental action plan was derived directly from the climate action pledge, right? We just, we went through and took the, all of it, which each item in the pledge was a fairly complex set of possibilities. And we homed it down to, what, I don't know, 12 or 15, actually, I know some number in that range, of which some have achieved and some have been lost focus in the fog of time.
Right, so one of the, and by the way, as some of you know more than others, even though the GPTF hasn't been formally active, there still has been a lot of work being done within the village, within the town, and within the county, with great contributions from suburban residents. And so when we were in, when we met, we were talking about how do we reboot, how do we be effective? And what we'd like to suggest is that we do work with a climate action checklist, which is pretty well organized, easily downloadable. And it's, and it's got the different, it's got actually like pledge element number one, pledge to be climate smart community, 1.1 has passed a resolution adopting the CSC pledge. Check. Create a climate, create a community climate smart community task force focused on climate mitigation and adaptation. Check. So we wanted to get guidance from the village as to what, from the board, as to what would the priorities that you would like to see addressed. And then what we'd like to do is, we would go back together as a group, find out what else, what additional information we used to know. And then talk about what we thought it would take to do it. And then come back to the board with our idea of how it could be accomplished and what resources would be needed, whether that would be staff cooperation, whether that would be financial support, whether that would be training, or whatever issues. And then at that point, that could be discussed with the board to see whether that made sense to move forward with that particular item. Or do we need to put that one on hold for now, or do we need to scale that one back?
That one, the climate smart certification?
Whatever the priority, what I would like to see come out of tonight is, is there, is for the boards, either let's know what your top, like, five priorities are. And or if you want to actually take some time to review the checklist and review that, and then get back to us and what you think the top five items are, or 10, whatever. And like, if we could discuss them among ourselves to say, okay, in order for us to know how to move forward this, to accomplish this item, we would need the following additional information. And since we've had that, we would then.
It seems clear that the certifications are good things to get.
Well, no, I agree.
And picking individual items off the Village Environmental Action Plan, some of those are really subsets of what you would do in order to get, you know, a certification, like the building, the energy plan, or whatever it is.
Agreed.
So, but the other thing is, I'm concerned about the fact that there's a lot of things that come up incrementally that we would need input on, and input in a timely manner, which has been a problem in the past. So, for instance, leak lowers, you know, they come up, it's become an issue, and, you know, we really could give some additional feedback on that. And, you know, the GPTF is a kind of a strange hiatus right now, I understand, but it's things like that that come up on the fly, that just, you can't just be like, let's not honor agreed upon five items, because part of the five items have to be, one of them should be dealing with those immediate concerns that the village has in terms of environmental policy.
Yeah, but I'm not necessarily hearing you say that you would only work with those five. I think you're coming up with a plan to try to make sure we're all on the same page, starting from agreed upon goals that are village goals, not solely, like, you might have ideas, you know, that are wider than our goals.
Or narrower.
Or narrower. But then we, we might not be jiving it at this moment in time, or any moment in time. So what we're looking at is what, what can we agree, or the village one's done, and you also feel as appropriate tasks for you, and if we can agree on lists like that, I think would be helpful to work on the list you have. But that does not preclude something coming up that might, that, you know, we tell you guys, you know, this is now we're coming on the radar, it's going to be really good like your input with that. So I don't see that those are.
No, what I'm saying is, is one of the five things that's, that is one of them, it's a position that you, it's a position holder that you understand that some resource is going to have to be allocated on the fly to. It's not one of these things that, it's got to be one of the core goals of the, of the committee.
Absolutely. We are not disagreeing with that.
No, I know.
Mark's just asserting that one is for real.
Right, because in a community, it's how things come up, and when they come up from the grassroots, from your citizens, you got to deal with it, right? And you need some input from people that have been paying attention to these issues some life, and you just need some, right? And can do research for them.
Understanding.
You got it, definitely.
I agree. That said, I'd like to, just for the record, for anybody who's listening or watching, Green Policy Task Force has been on hiatus since October last year. And before that, a couple of years before that, the issue of, when the issue of gas power leak lowers came up, it was discussed, researched, but because we were dealing with implementing the Love and Believin' Program and needing the cooperation of landscapers, it was decided together that both, that would be tabled for, that issue would be tabled for the moment. So when it came up, when that issue bubbled up from the community recently, we were still sort of on, in hiatus and not having the resources, the wherewithal, to really do, to fulfill that function. And, you know, it sounds like, you know, the community group has actually done that, so, which is great. And I think there is, I think there are roles for both. So we have, you know, the Green Policy Task Force is a village appointed task force. We serve the pleasure of the board. We need to be aligned with your priorities. And I think there's also a role for community activist groups who can bring issues to the fore that are, you know, alive to that. And I don't think those are mutually exclusive, and I don't think we need to be the only source of policy advisement on these issues. But I think we certainly, you know, totally agree with your point, Mark, that we would fulfill that well.
I agree that we have to be open to whatever is coming from the other grassroots organizations that are coming forward. I mean, you can't all necessarily funnel through GPTF, but, you know, there could be strong cooperation for certain projects.
Absolutely, and communication.
Or sometimes it might be matter of priority, priority. You know, there may be something that comes up from the community, nothing, but something that it's like, that's important, but we have other things in the, we work for us. So this is like strands, like we're, you know, strands, and should not be in conflict, we should be working.
Right, and as I understand it, it's basically because we are village appointed, you know, we do take direction from the village. Local activist groups don't, that is not how they get directed. So, so, you know, there's sort of different parts of the community there. And also, just, you know, in our discussion, in our reboot meeting, really tossing around ideas, you know, how, my understanding of how we agree, you know, there are people who are under the group GPTF who are village appointed. So whoever really wants to step up, we take that formal step. You know, we're welcoming new blood, there are a couple people interested, we encourage that. But also, for people who don't want to take on that formal responsibility commitment, we are intending on having sort of satellite committees. There might, like, in one case, there is a parent at Main Street School who has done a diligent job and really dug in real to work on getting voice reduction implemented in Main Street School. So this one parent with her daughter partnered up with Judy Crimmer, who's a GPTF member, got some GPTF support, but pretty much forged ahead on her own, but we were a significant help to her. You know, and some of it was, you know, we were able to provide some equipment, as well as also we have some of the networks and the connections, and we were getting her connected up, like, to the scars of people who have, who have been, you know, developing some very successful programs, developing, implementing some successful programs. So, you know, even though we're small, we do have a lot of knowledge, and we have a lot of networks and connections and various other things, and so I think, you know, as a GPTF, we can also partner up with other people, individuals or groups, help them in the ways we can legitimately. And then we can serve the board in the ways we can legitimately. So environmental good for it all.
I know one of the concerns was about how we interface with the schools, because it's not, it's not the village's.
We are.
You know, I know you don't know, I'm not telling you, you don't know. But, you know, that, in terms of where he's been, resources, energy, I think we just have to be clear, you may do some things that are not, you know, that are a little outside of the village list, and that feels well to the good, but we have to be clear, what is your mandate from the village and how that's working.
Well, yeah, agreed. And the thing is, this was spearheaded by a parent with GPTF support, and part of the justification of the GPTF support is the fact that the village hauls the school's waste.
I'm sorry, the?
The village hauls the materials from the school. So the school is not doing efficient and effective recycling, that costs the village money. And if we can get the food waste, which is usually the heaviest part of the waste stream, if we can get that out of the school waste stream, we dream, we dream, then that's less charged to the village. So to me, that's, that's a benefit, you know, you can get environmental points, as well as it is a cost that, you know, there's a potential cost that enters the village.
And likewise, recycling. Everything they don't recycle costs the village money, just as everything we don't recycle costs the village money.
Now, could I bring up the mission statement of the, we have a company of, I don't know if we have one, but are you guys fine, and is everybody on our board fine with that mission statement, or does it need to be adjusted?
Finally, what's it assume?
The mission of the every team Green Policy Task Force is to study and recommend to the Board of Trustees policies, procedures, programs, actions, and possible legislation that further the goal of sustainability and climate protection. The GPTF will build upon and extend the work of the CPTF report and put into practice initiatives related to the following categories: public awareness and education, waste management, water management, transportation, land use, and energy.
I would say that since that was written, the CPTF report, that's the Climate Protection Task Force, for those who don't know, that produced a report and then disbanded, and was on it, that has been kind of augmented by the state Climate Communities, Climate Smart Communities Program, so we might want to amend that.
I think that the.
What did you do?
In our environmental action plan should be referenced, which is built on the climate smart.
Because one thing we had to do with the analysis of the Climate Protection Task Force report was that, well, one thing is probably highly out of date right now, you know.
Oh, you were on it too.
But the other thing is, when people went through it, and the GPTF originally went through it, there were a lot of things that were hard to figure out how to make them actionable at that point in time. So I think that granularity, perhaps, of the environmental action plan, and the items in the climate smart community.
Check.
Those things seem to be more thought out through and actionable.
So I think it is a good idea to reference, that very referencing the environmental action plan.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Well, if people are comfortable with the environmental action plan that's on the website, came, I think it's from about 2014. So if you guys are comfortable, I know it took a lot of work back and forth to produce that, so if you guys are still comfortable with that.
We're as comfortable as we can be until we update it.
So.
Which, which, which we were referencing.
Well, environmental action plan.
Still on the.
Not for our.
So that, that came out as a pledge, and it connects back to the climate smart community. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so if we are following the environmental action plan, check, 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 and then we want it, check, 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 on climate smart, they would align.
They should, yes. But I think some of them are evolving, you know, the climate smart communities program may have evolved since 2014.
One thing that Larry's just showing me, that we, on the environmental action plan, I guess we have reference to a sustainability coordinator position, and we found that very difficult, difficult to fund at a level that could get us someone in, in the village government, of high quality, funding, was much beyond what anyone, the trustees felt was reasonable for the village to be spending for that. What we did do, though, is to, you know, to look at trying to apply monies to specific projects with leadership, such as what happened with the microgrid project, where we and Petra were working on it full time, or I don't know if it was full time, but she was focused in this, getting some payment at the end for her volunteer. So I think that's kind of where we've gotten to, in the, as opposed to the sustainability coordinator, there's funds to do things when appropriate, is that it?
That actually, that actually leads to a lot of flexibility, because we do still have the appropriations available, we don't have a coordinator hired, as you know. But what we would expect, as you just outlined, is that when you come back with your, when we give you our issues, and you come back with telling us what it's going to take to do it, we expect that some of those are going to be in the pages of help us, and we'll have the money to do it.
For instance, with trying to model facility duty data into the actual building, into actual assets, what means, what potential options are, what potential ballpark costs, that's probably beyond most of your expertise. I don't know where Nikki is at this point, my kind of stuff, but, so.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think the board is looking for slave labor from our volunteers, quite mildly.
Wait.
I said loudly enough. But I think that there are, I speak for myself, I do not have the expertise to be able to address some of the items that are in the environmental action plan. Something is simple, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but something as simple as setting a energy reduction goal over a certain window of time, I don't even know where to start with that, because you can't just pick a number out of thin air, because, because are you, you have to kind of assess, are you already efficient or not efficient in comparison to other similar operations? That sounds to me like a consultant. You tell me, what consultant's going to do that? I have no idea where to start. You know what I mean? And that's the kind of guidance we're looking for.
Right, so that, that is available, and so the emissions inventory and emissions goals.
You'll have the, what you're telling us all about. Yes, I think, I mean, I know we're coming up almost on our half hour, but I think that, I think the good news is, I think we're still very much aligned. I think that getting a new, you know, three, four, or five more really enthusiastic participants will help bring everything in the whole group.
Absolutely.
The three of you and probably three others have done the heavy lifting, including Mark, for 15 years.
20.
20. Maybe not quite, maybe not part of the whole time. But, but, you know, so I think that that's part of it. And I think, and I think, so I think another big piece was regular communication between our board and your board. So I think, you know, for the next three months, maybe we have either one of the beginning, 15 minutes at the beginning of either a regular meeting or a work session, depending on what works better. We just have you come in and say, hey, listen, this one's working on that kind of thing. And I think two things to do for focus for the, for the next meeting are kind of reboot and revise the mission statement, and then we can review it as a group and agree again. And kind of look at the environmental action plan, and see which things are outdated, which things make sense, which things don't, because we haven't looked at it in three, three years or so. So if we can kind of those two things, it kind of gets your opinion on them before we meet again. And I do think that the climate action checklist is something, you know, working for certification, I think it's something that's great, because it gives you a tangible goal. It's almost like when you say I'm going to run every day, if you say I'm going to run a 10K at the end of the summer, it's a very different thing. So I think that that's maybe a very, you know, kind of easy way forward to get it rebooted, and I think get people signed, and we're starting to accomplish things knocking on the switch.
I agree with all of this.
One thing I'd like to see from you, of course, when you were sort of closing I thought, which was suggesting, what would these five priority items, not, you know, we think the environmental action plan is sort of one bucket, but climate smart community certification, and maybe the climate energy, whatever it is.
The other certifications.
Clean energy.
Those are, those certifications you either, you know, to take as two separate items, or say those kinds of certifications as another bucket that we're dealing with. And then there might be other things, that you have other buckets that are more broad than just individual items out of the action plan. One of the things I just was thinking about, for instance, is just public outreach, there's always going to be a need for some sort of outreach on something, whether it's stormwater, handling, or, you know, water reduction, water use reduction, and blah, blah, blah. So there's always going to be an educational component, that you'll probably want to, maybe you'll end up saying, you know, there's something, some hot buttons that we want to try to address. And that's a place where the village can help with funding, obviously.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so are we talking now about coming up separately with, right, you meant come up with separate lists and then kind of jive them?
I, I almost think, I'm thinking they invited us to submit a list, I, I probably have it written already.
Oh, right.
I mean that, yeah, I kind of know the areas that I, that I know or need help. So that's probably going to focus things, if you want to make.
I mean, it's up to them.
If you want to send us, we can take a look at it, and then we get to.
And we have that checklist. Do you have this, Larry?
I know.
Can you make sure we did?
Also do the link.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
We have a question.
The people that have put their, for their interest.
Oh, that's exactly my question. We, we, we need to know, maybe you all, I don't know, the names of those people, and if you're recommending them, maybe a little bit about their background, and then we have to appoint them.
You know what, we have a couple names. I think we came across a fair number of names during the conference and plan update process. So I think we all have.
We have some.
Just let us know, let us know who you have.
Okay. So you sent that form of letter, right?
And what for the, if we have names that you have.
Yeah.
What information do you want to come in?
Yeah, what do you need to know?
Addresses.
How you met him, whatever.
Right.
Are they willing to?
Relevant experience, background, interests, you know, matter of things, resume.
We'll.
So we just need to share the names of the next.
But.
I'm thinking of coming back.
Yes.
We can have the next.
Like, maybe, maybe not Monday's meeting, but maybe like the work session in July.
July work session. So then we'll have names, we'll have taken a look at the mission statement, we'll get that checklist from you, we'll go off Larry's list, and we, let's, let's.
Should we, we're just going to do a draft of the revision of the mission statement, or is that?
I thought that was.
Let's do that, should it?
Either one, it's a chicken or the egg, so.
I think we should just do it.
We can do this, I don't think it's happening.
I agree. Three quarters of this, he's already in his brain.
Okay, this guy can do it.
Yeah, that's what it's off of.
But then you also, you also mentioned about redoing the environmental action plan and propose updates. Is that something you want, you want to tackle, or you want that on our plate?
No, that's, that's.
That's something we have to.
I think that's going to be one of the tasks.
You're in the.
If you're going to use it as a source, as a bucket, the first thing to do is renew it to make sure that, I don't, I don't have the expertise to figure out what's out of date, what's not.
Maybe you guys. So maybe you guys can start working on that, looking at that and saying, you know, what's, what's done, what's updated, what needs to be updated, you know, sustainability coordinator, change the wording to, you know, fine.
Yeah, and then it seems like when you do get, when issues do come before you, Mayor and Council, Council people, then you can refer back to us, like just emails, oh, we're getting calls about this, you know, can the GPTF please, you know, start working with this.
For you, for your committed to staying on, but.
And there are others.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are.
And some people only want to work on particular projects, we get that, you know, and there are the people who you know they're doing, and they don't come to our attention. So it sounds like we have a lot to stir. Excellent.
I know you're, I'm just to move on, I'd just like to have one minute to talk about one, to elevate one issue that has been coming to us. I still get the emails to we@erickonny.org from the website. Several people have recently, new residents have asked why we don't provide a place to compost, to drop off food waste, compost the way they were able to in Queens or Brooklyn at the farmer's market or whatever. And I wanted to convey that to you because this whole issue of composting seems to be getting more traction everywhere I look. I mean, you know, the, the composter sale that we are sponsoring has gotten a lot of response. And I think, you know, as a means of not only fulfilling both, you know, aspect of the climate smart communities checklist and your environmental action plan and saving the village money because, you know, whatever you keep out of the waste stream, you don't have to pay for. So the compost issue and also recycling issue, like I think we really need, it's time to we really address the issue of providing proper recycling containers in our village parks and facilities and primary street.
Okay. So that's top priorities? We're going to be working on this too.
People, citizen residents come and they say, why is there no place for me to put, you know, a model when I walk out and black out?
So also the green, green ever, is that devoted to you?
Yes.
So should we have some other names to it? Because you can add multiple names on it, like in the words of M.J.'s.
Of two guys. I mean, if it's something that I don't have, you know, I'm not on that board, can whoever.
In general, it'd be good to have two people.
Yeah, I would say. Like if you're open to gigs or something. Yeah, one person is not resilient.
What we had, I mean, that is just not really a possibility. I mean, like Trees Act has three people on it, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, Ellie, Ellie, we've got a couple of those.
And Kevin is after you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. We look forward to moving forward.
Keep one out.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Still have this one.
Oh.
I thought you were going to bump me off this week.
Why?
It's very careful last minute.
It's not a mic copy.
This was the original. This is a review, mostly discussion of proposed leaf blower law. We, we are, it's about seven minutes behind schedule, it's not so bad. Sorry, I mean, it's not here yet, but there'll be a lot of this legal ease that we're concerned with here. It's more, I think, we've obviously got a lot of feedback. We got a lot of feedback at the public, the first public hearing. We continue to get emails. You know, so I think it's, it's been, it's been, I think it's been great that we have, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback. I think that in my, my personal opinion, I'll open up with opinions because we're not off. A lot of the, a lot of the recent feedback is definitely that we need even a stronger law than the one we're proposing. I don't think I necessarily disagree with that, but I think right now we have nothing at all. And I do think that there is something beneficial about having somewhat of a transition. Because I do think that there's, there's obviously big global issues, right? Like there's, you know, pollution from the engines, there's particulate matter and there's soil erosion, all that kind of stuff, which I don't disagree with.
Oh, God.
I was, I've got 20 minutes, I've been, Steve, I'm stalling for you.
Oh, yeah? Now we just started.
So to me, we, we obviously spend a lot of time on kind of the law that we had proposed. You know, and it's also times of the essence because we're already, we're almost, you know, we're into, you know, halfway through June already. And we'd like to pass something relatively quickly. So to me, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of kind of going much stricter now. I'm not opposed to doing that maybe next year because I don't think we have people in time to adjust to the changes, even if in the long run they are better changes. So that's kind of my opening salvo.
So you like keeping it the way it is?
Very soon.
Is there any particular thing you add?
The only other, the only exception that I, that I feel is reasonable for individuals. And I know that one of our neighbors has that blanket running here. I also, I do think that the way individuals use leaf blowers is drastically different than the way that contractors and lawn professionals use leaf blowers. And I think that it's typically much shorter in duration, so I think you can make an exception by putting short limitation on it, but you know, maybe once a week for more than 30 minutes, something like that. And I think that that covers 99% of what's used by, by individuals. That's kind of my take on where we are. I definitely have heard what people are saying. I'm not denying that they're not good for the environment or anything like that. I think they aren't good for the environment. I think that also allowing people the year, making people wear them will also push them towards, you know, electric leaf blowers more because I think frankly for most of the individuals that use them, electric leaf blowers, either cordless or, or with a cord, will serve, will serve the job for them. And I think that they'll eventually learn that. And you know, maybe they get one more season ahead of their old gas power room before they switch over. But that's, that's kind of where I stand now. You know, I think the only other kind of technical issue, and I'll defer to Mary on this, I don't think we can regulate the school district. But I think we can make a suggestion, but I think we should take that out because we've had, people say, again, we should be, we should say, we should ban the school from using them around people. And then the school is saying, we can't comply with your law, not because they say we don't have authority, which I thought was very nice of them, but because it's impossible because they're property.
The only thing is the fact, the fact that they didn't say you can't regulate us makes me wonder.
Maybe we can.
Maybe we can.
So.
But anyway, I, I, to me, the, the schools are, I think, I think they'll get enough public pressure and, you know, if we got this over all the emails that we got outlining the environmental hazards, I think that they'll minimize the use. And so I think that, I don't think we have to go into the gray area, can we regulate them or not? I mean, it's, it's, it's like one line in our, in our potential law.
Well, all you do is be, me taking out the work in school.
In school, exactly.
I mean, yeah.
But those are, those are my, those are, those are my feelings.
So I had three points to make, one of which is I have a list of about eight things that we talked about in the public hearing and made sense to go through them very quickly just to be sure. The second, actually, fourth thing, so the second thing is that there is a point that when you have too many exceptions, then enforcement becomes a problem because you don't know which exceptions and what at work. So there's been a lot of public comment about, let's keep it simple and direct and minimize the exceptions for, you know, except for the emergency kind of storm exception, which we have to talk about. The third thing is I thought that one email we got forwarded by the landscaper who went totally electric on his lawn care and was able to boost his revenues and his billing because he provided a environmentally smart solution to clients. I think that's worth sharing and I'd like to see it entered into the record somehow, either not by Red Tonight, but somehow made available so the public could access and see that there is, in fact, some, some landscapers are able to see that it's not a glass, you know, half empty, but a glass half full and they can push it further. And my final thing is that we, I did invite Tim Downey here and I see that he's got a battery, a battery packed leaf blower with him. And I thought that it would be interesting.
You had it on for you to start.
Find a single leaf. It's a chaser.
Oh, yeah, I did bring a bag of leaves.
Oh, I mean, one, that's all they need.
So I thought it'd be interesting to talk to him just to get a perspective of how, what the impacts in his experience as a landscaper. But secondly, if he was the one that really started me thinking about the notion of kind of having a courtesy kind of, that you try to get people to, not just contractors, but also homeowners, to understand that there, there should be some basic rules, like a mis manners of, of blowers. You know, the best, that's a public outreach initially, until at some point it doesn't become a public outreach, it becomes something else.
I think one other thing I'll add quickly because this is kind of applicable to that is I think that our multifamily exception right now, I think almost like love and leave them, I think once, once we continue to put pressure on them, like they'll eventually come around and say, you know what, it can't work as opposed to, you know, and preventing the kind of, you know, getting a whole bunch, you know, getting them to get 38 people to sign a petition and then something like, I think this, this year of kind of transition helps with that while we continue to work with it. And I remember when you kind of talked to them, I think it was your presentation that was actually about love and leave them, it wasn't just, you know, marketing, me and my bully pulpit talking about it, it was someone who does it, I think can really change the way they look. And I think, you know, talking to Caesar down at, you know, at Hack Moon, you know, I think they're pretty reasonable. And I think when you say, listen, I'm able to do this with, you know, a battery powered one or even some places, I'm sure they can use corded ones down there. That's actually the thing where I think they can, you know, we can wean them off of the way, we've always done it this way and we're afraid if we don't do it, it won't be safe and that sort of. So. Where you want to?
No, I did other, but I want to be sure that, and we also have the Irvington Environmental Activist, the Environmental Subcommittee here with someone, at least a representative would like to talk to us a little bit as well, so how do you want to do that? It seems like.
See the demo or whatever. Show us.
Do you want to start with Tim so he can actually get out of here too?
Yeah. I'm happy.
You want to come?
Sure.
Got his chair, show us your toys and talk to us on that.
My name is Timmy Downey. Recorded? Yeah. My name is Timmy Downey from Hastings. So I'd be keen to speak to, answer questions I can help with here with any residents that might be in attendance. First of all, I'd like to address that some things I just heard have passed around on the table, that actually aren't accurate. And it's very important to be accurate in the dialogue here to come up with a good, sound, functioning law or set of rules. Otherwise you're going to have what goes on in Dobbs Ferry in Hastings, you're going to have a police car chase. They failed to write good laws down in Hastings, they failed to do so in Dobbs Ferry because first off, there was a first go at it. So there's some time to learn, the pitfalls, when it doesn't, doesn't work, so that's no one's fault, that's just experience. Secondly, it depends upon your knowledge on the topic to build right up a law well. In a case in Hastings, the police prefer on, on the blower chase and there's a genuine need for a tool used properly to keep our residents or your village in respect for order. One of the complaints that's come out of me is how messy it looks since the law went into effect. Places that normally kept, whether it be village sidewalks, street sidewalks that were on a homeowner's property, that a homeowner typically would have been responsible for, that now were not able to be serviced, start to look like Oregon Trail, two months into the season, once the law went into effect on whatever may date, and I can see that something here, you've always kept your sidewalks, which are abundant up here in Irvington, a long bloodway, which are kept neatly and presentable by the different homeowners. The way, before you know it, they aren't, they look unkept, they're less tidy to walk on, there's less space on them. You mentioned earlier about, you know, that it could easily go to corded machines, as you mentioned, if you go to corded machines, that's just not practical. That may work with your experience of.
For homeowners, not, not right.
But the implication was that home contractors could, you know, wean over to that, they simply can't, it's not practical from the standpoint of a tool's versatility and where you plug in, where you find a power inside the house, it's just not going to work. I did bring a tool here that kind of is a bridge that would be something that would be helpful to many properties in Irvington where you can clean the sidewalks. And all you really need to be concerned with is the sidewalks and tracking stuff in the house, you have the same footing, the sidewalks are kept neat. But this insanity that I see, and I'm largely in agreement with your law here because I witnessed contracts out there, it's never the machine, just like it's not the, it's not the car, it's individually, it's a bad choice. Same thing with the blower, it's not the machine, if you want a point machine, they don't have the honest integrity, you say it's the person, it's a culture, the people out there, they're doing the work, it's not the red or white machine. I've watched contracts out there blowing creva pedals with a big blower, blowing the death out of the ground because they have no understanding, they're doing, they weren't trained, they don't, the boss leads them. So that kind of, over and over repeated, showing up to a homeowner's property on a Saturday morning at 10 to 8, because I can get that extra buck, or whatever it is, shattering windows of a house, that kind of conduct, I think one person would be helpful is to roll out something that goes to the homeowners, look, we're serious, enough is enough for this, you have to gain control of it, you write the check, you're the final arbiter on this, you need to have a conversation with your contractor. This is how conduct should be, you should not be shattering windows on a Saturday morning at 4 to 8, you shouldn't be blowing debris out the street thinking it's okay to let cars whisk it away, it's all that matters and that first is the foundation of poor professionalism. Law was when they were allowed during the season, it's right in fall seasons, when you talk about using one handheld blower or one back blower, that's going to really go fly against the effort of the mulching leaf task because what you typically do, typically do is you'll have two men assembling the leaves, a third man would come behind, it turned to two and three, third man will come behind, start mulching up, one man drops off and will clean the leaves that's been, that have been mulched, dispersed them, do whatever they have to do with them. And then they'll rejoin the other blower. If you just have one blower, you can't work around bushes and corners quickly. So you're actually in duration, you'll have the machines running while we're on a property because you can't use the, the benefit of dual air streams coming in to quickly go through something. But like Irvington do with the love and leave them campaign, it would be nice to put together a set of guidelines to, to give to residents, this will be like to ask you of your contractors to conduct your something that's mattered, stop blowing to death out of the ground just because you think that's the justification for sending an invoice at the end of a month because you burnt gas in for X number of minutes on a property. There has to be training along those lines. So one thing actually coming up full circle would be you have a problem with the fall, with the mulching, with your equipment limitations, that's going to be a major because you made a big strategy, the model in the community, in the county for this leaf program here. This would be a big setback and you'd hear that from anyone here who's participating in.
We did point it from one landscaper.
Yeah. Big time. And the other thing would be to have a bridge tool that allows citizens, this machine to have a drive was, otherwise I can't see how you can actually go for a month of mid-May or whatever your time is, mid-June, let me two or three months, it's got to be horrendous expression in springtime when you have graduation events, you have Memorial Day, you have Fourth of July, there's got to be some consideration for people who want to, they bought a home, they're having graduation, they're having, you have barbecue, they want to have house presented, but they're not tracking stuff in and you've had people that weather stuff going from the trees and, you know, the house is.
What do you mean by as a bridge tool? You mean that even during the months where it's, the gases is banned, you allow electric use? Is that the, is that the sense of a bridge tool?
Yes.
Well, that's, I'm trying to understand what he means by bridge tool.
I, I didn't, I didn't, maybe didn't read the law because I thought it was now banned.
Just guess.
Just guess. Now, the other thing that you said about copies of half acre or greater, how is that information going to be disseminated to the community? Look at it, a village tax map, can you have some sort of mapping? I can see the greatest problem being in the village concentration down by the tunnel, you know, the train transit, those closed houses where they're right against one another. But they try and put that all into one frame at the same house, it doesn't make a lot of mistake, not a lot of sense. That's one of the mistakes that happen in other villages, writing the laws, they're treating it as one size fits all when you don't have this consideration.[1772.31] you don't have this consideration. We still have to come back to courteous use, I don't care if you're Madison Park or you're Harman, you can't have, you know, two guys chasing a leaf, as we stated earlier, they just don't understand what they're doing, and it doesn't need to date.
And how about, we've heard a little bit about, you know, kind of a registration of landscapers concerned in communities.
Tarrytown.
Things in Tarrytown, for instance, where, you know, I think you could have them, you could say, hey, you know, you run a, you run a landscape company, you want to operate in Irvington, here's our, here's our love and leave information, here's our courteous leaf blower information, you have the file that you understand, in order to get your, you know, certification, or whatever, or permit to operate it.
Yeah, I was actually going to do one, higher than that, Hastings was ignored, was to have a decal on the trailer.
But it does not have to be...
So you recognize, okay, you understand the rules, now if we see you just a penguins, oh, you don't have the decal on, you didn't register, because Harley has a registration fee too, you didn't register.
Per blower?
No, well, it should be on the truck, and it was a police fire truck pulls up, just to see and identify, you may have to get out and have a conversation, how you registered, and if you go, and then answer, maybe you get one warning that you know about the law, okay, here's the document, press it again, you have it whatever time.
Might get on the truck, and have them on the equipment.
Doesn't have to be ownersly expensive either, it's more of a control rule.
No, it's fairly cheap at Tarrytown, but they use it as script, because...
So Tim, do you know that it's still be the way it's done in Tarrytown? I did go to Tarrytown five or six years ago and talked to them, and I then remembered that they had a, I understand, they filled out a form.
So again, I have no idea, I don't work in Tarrytown, I don't know.
But I know we can find this app without too much trouble.
Also, people can use the website.
We've heard a lot out there.
You know, professionals.
The unlike-ho, it seems to...
But you're saying, aren't they also...
Aren't they also...
They have a registration. So virtually in Tarrytown... They have a registration, but you can, there's not much of a limit.
Not that you can tell me, but it's a device, it's a...
Yeah, no, no, I know, but they do, but they allow the blowers.
And that's, that's a ready training, you want to, that's not just a ready training, you want to have a education, cultural practice.
Exactly, exactly.
Leverage, right.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you if you have an opinion on our timeframes in terms of, like, weeds are flying, that's very clean up in fall. Right now, we have March fifteenth to September fifteenth, December fifteenth, and I'm wondering, you know, given change in climate over the years, you know, we're changing, you know, leaves are falling later, or starting to fall later, and might that be extended?
Well, one thing, later in, you know, in September or perhaps October, and a little longer, it's... Yeah, two problems, one is spring, one is fall. The one, the springtime is when the oats, the typical big messy one, or some of the true trees are dropping, that's still going on in May, it'd almost be nice if you could have Memorial Day, you know, depending, it can vary, ten day swings, there's, by express ten, fourteen day swings, depending on how the spring warmed up.
So June, or...
June first would be good, possibly, I mean, you do kind of find these, those graduation parties, but hey, concessions have to be made. The problem with fall, with September fifteenth, is always the one, oaks are dropping, there are acorns en masse, third week in August, Labor Day, and so forth, so you're rolling it, and one time I went to Hastings, it said, you could get injured in that, and somebody boohooed me, well, homeowner came in, but the cast, I don't know if it's a step... So it'd be nice to have, you have those fluctuations in acorn volume, but it'd be nice to have that tool available, again, you can't chop up your law too much, and it may be difficult, Mark's correct, as we kept several, but I'm just telling you what reality is out there, acorns are dropping heavily on certain...
How are they going to fall into December?
You should be able to wrap up fifteen, by fifteenth of December.
But September one, is that reasonable for the...
You would have to walk carefully, just walk carefully, the acorns coming down, yeah, the large ones are coming down mid-July, little baby acorns, but then the big lowly volleys, falls are coming down en masse, then August through Labor Day, little replaced in the Mahash, and you can't fall on them if they're en masse.
Yes.
Could you turn that on? If it won't be a breath, then I'll do it, stand away, point it away.
It's okay. You know what here sounds like?
I'm sure.
This will be one on someone's back.
Yeah.
They had different speeds, and if they do, it's a walkway in front of the house.
That's why you need one after the house.
It's like a hair dryer. I have to clean the driveway, and that's, that's it. But this is good for summertime, this will not do autumn, this will not do winter, this is good keeping grass...
Battery operated, what is that called?
Yeah, here's the...
Can you do that again? I'm sorry, Doc.
Yeah.
No, please, put some advertisements up for the first time, so I had to click through those. Do it outside the door.
When you're ready.
Yeah, go. Well, this is seventy dBs right here, but if we're fifty feet away, that would be...
There was seventy?
Seventy.
Yeah, I know.
Just there, right next to it.
So tell me the description of that, it's a...
One of the big problems, you have your law, everyone's law, and I went into Village Daptur, went inadvertently, part-time Floyd mine, used the ball when he wasn't supposed to, had to go to Daptur Court, you keep referring to this as leaf blower, there's no such thing as leaf blower, the correct way to address this is a gas-powered backpack blower. If I go to court, and I bring the document with me, that US patent numbers are there, that's the part in the harbor, that's the name of it, that's a red-nice backpack blower, there's nowhere, so there's a gap in the law that's already written, because the layperson just uses euphemism or a slang, but there's no such thing as leaf blower, it could use to be blowing in a parking lot, it's a parking, a task force, it's a parking, it's the application, it's the verb, leaf blowing, it's not the noun, the device. You should be straight about your law and call it a back, a gas-powered backpack blower, a gas-powered push blower.
But that is a gas-powered, right?
No, you have to have, you have to have gas, you have to leave blower, out of some of the leaves, cleaning rest of the thing, so where am I in leaf blower law?
So you need to, a company can do a definition of all three of them, now you need to have your couple of leaf blowers, and you define what includes.
So how, actually, they are sometimes called leaf blowers, because I was checking, because Mark, I was trying to see whether you were, whether that was in charge, what the term Mark was for the back, backpack.
Amazon will call that, because they're telling to you, the consumer who use that slang. The legal name is the, the legal name, which is backpack blower, if we're going to go to court, that's the legal name of the device.
So how does the effectiveness differ between that battery-operated backpack blower?
numeric law.
Compared to a gas-powered one?
For the summer season, on many residential homes, they vary in size, if you're cleaning sidewalks, driveway, have a modest, single-car driveway, village sidewalks of average width on roadway, residential sidewalks, that is sufficient.
In the studios.
It won't do as good a job, there has to be concessions made, you can't roll out the big blower off the truck on the wheels, to be blowing at your patio, waiting for the neighbors sitting out, or running at six o'clock at night, on a Friday night, because you're late.
So that's as effective for an individual, is it, again, for a professional, it's also adequate?
For summer season.
For summer.
On the properties that I know of or observe, there can be things that I'm unaware of, I'm not going to say are encompassing, because there's some big homes down at Farber Lane, behind gates, I don't know what goes on there, I know I hear big blowers guys drying the grass, same as it sounds, they're drying the grass with a big push blower, you know, on a June day, don't know why you need it, homeowner probably never walks down there, they don't take the logic.
So from your experience, when you talked about needing two to do the love them and leave them, and the way they have to be coordinated with the third person?
Very important.
Are you of the opinion that that would not adequately do that?
No.
Job, because it would take longer, or because it just wouldn't do it?
Different, different task, it's like trying to drive a, you know, framing a house and using a little tack hammer versus a framing hammer, you need the right tool for the eradication, this is the right tool for summer application, in most, in many instances. In the autumn, with your native tree canopy here, having Irvington, that is inadequate, and create frustration, and people just got a business...
You'd just be standing there for a long time with a pile of those leaves, and it just wouldn't be effective to move them?
The only purpose for the leaf, blowing the leaves, is to get them to an area, somewhere where you chop, you're not supposed, that's one of the behaviors, you're not supposed to be using it as a bulldozer.
Right.
Get it to the area, process handle, done, then move on, as quickly and quietly as you can.
So it would be much quicker to do it with a gas-powered one than to do that?
With two gas...
Two gas-powered.
The same jobs, two gas powers, backpack blowers, ten minutes, one backpack blower, half hour.
And those, it just wouldn't do it, you'd stand there for hours?
It should be invited or something, right, like it just doesn't come up?
That's what, see, that's, here's some of the points of conduct, adjust, most people don't do this, pay attention, adjust your irrigation systems, try the day of service you're there, two days, Monday and Tuesday, have the irrigation not go on, so you're not having wet grass that you have to then use a blower. Try and stage yourself around properties that are thin and light after we've had rain, no good, the heavy turf ones that have clogs, and now you make work for something, you have to use the sun, you have to use the weather, always be thinking about this, to minimize use, that's what we've been doing for years, minimize the use, keep it quiet.
Great, so I want to get you to look at the, I sent you the courtesy guidelines, what are your feedback?
Okay, Ross, yeah, I gave the guidelines, I'll go in depth, I just want to kind of see that, how this is going to be met here in the village, and be happy for the time that it's been, this had not been...
That's why the courtesy stuff, I think it's important, that we do a lot, whatever we can do.
We do need that one.
Sooner or better, we'd like to have something ready for when we pass the law, so we have some materials to start handing out, to be posted on the website, because it's going to take a while to come up with a mechanism to get that to everyone.
And you're still wanting to pass the law for July first?
I don't know, if you can get homeowners, speaking to homeowners, have some consideration of one another, and train, they have the check, talk to landscapers, say, look, I'm in the community here, I have neighbors, can we use it this way? And...
We had heard the homeowners saying, please don't blow out their home, and then their neighbors are like, they were doing it anyway. So I think some ways, it's just, I think Mark talks about the culture of use, it's just, this is what they do, you know, they've always done it that way, you know, and I honestly think if they all had to bet on their best behavior, probably wouldn't even have this conversation.
But they, I was more unlike all these other people, I was eighteen years old too, I didn't know any better, it was different, the quibble was taking noise is powerful.
But you're... There should be some training, I guess what, that's what we're trying to get to.
It has to be training, has to be education, education, you know, just change kind of, because it's, it's the wild west, it's just out of control, I mean, what I see, and what I think is what goes on with walking stuff down the street, that just, that is self-sustained, it's really... Where is your foundation for, that's what, Cam, you know, bounce it back in the law, let it go into the soil, what is your thinking, I crap on you, and I, I just, I cannot, excuse my mouth, I just cannot stand that logic, and you do that, blow in the street, you have the problems on...
It seems like it would snow removal, you throw it all in the street too.
At least that helps, it goes to work.
I've seen it corralling by blowing it, and I've told this story before, multiple times, seen this, they're blowing it out into the middle roadway across two lanes, so they can help corral it back into somewhere else, and it's just like, this is crazy, not making a public hazard.
I typically see if they put out the roadway, don't be whisked at trucks and vehicles, did my job, no, this is, I witnessed it, filmed it, you passed, but thank you very much.
Appreciate you taking the time. Do you want to hear from the...
Sure.
Give a few minutes from the, from our activist, who's speaking?
Come on.
So you want to identify your...
Tim, it's why that? Irvington, Irvington, yeah, I'm all in this, some group of the Irvington activists. I can speak a minute or two on how we would love to relate to the, what this group is, and how it relates to the Green Policy Task Force, or me, or quiz me, to Green Policy Task Force, but maybe that's not on your agenda at this moment.
Frank, why don't you?
Let me say that there appear to be a lot of activists in this town, and many of them would like to contribute to the Green Policy Task Force goal as well.
I have to hear.
It's a large group of people who are concerned, and I was shocked with the issue of the gas leaf blowers, as they have come up with, the amount of emails are being generated that aren't even getting to you yet. So I'm a little sad that it seems that your mind is a little made up with where you are in terms of where you are going with this. We sent you a document that was about ten pages of research material, and then there was a sub-document that had another ten pages of references with, and seven of us have spent a week or so in research on this. And I appreciate very much hearing from a contractor, I feel that that is a very valid point of view, but we're talking about quality of life issues, and the larger law, I think, is what is the resident's view of what's going on? Are we designing the rules for the benefit of the contractor, or are we designing the rules for the benefit of the citizen, of the community, their children, their pets, and the wildlife, et cetera? So I'm not suggesting that you're not.
It's not, it's a balance that you're trying to reach.
Well, you're trying to reach this balance, but are you placing on the word of a contractor? I agree with much of what I just heard, I could disagree strongly with a number of things that he stated, and I'd be glad to go over them, I admire, I respect him, but that isn't necessarily my purpose, I'm just indicating for the record that some of the facts that were just stated to you may not be fact, and there are some inaccuracies there, so much of it isn't, and I agree completely with that.
Well, with that statement, I think you got to go into detail now.
Yeah. But you need to, you need to present, to present something to us tonight?
Yes, yes, and, and that has been...
I'd like to see just...
Okay, and there is that document there. So, you know, our basics are that as we review what's happening in the county, the current regulation as proposed puts us, notwithstanding this comment, that some of the regulations that are out there, there are prints that don't work, and we saw that very clearly when we reviewed all of them. But the current legislation, the legislation that you're proposing, puts us at the bottom of the list in terms of the county, with the people that are doing it, and in the river towns.
Reading the bottom of the list in terms of how much they're regulated?
Yeah.
Versus people that don't have any, I guess, we have stepped in.
Exactly. I will agree with you, Brad, on that, absolutely.
Although we can also ban the home blowers, there's a lot of things we can do, ban all cars, it'd be much... You know, like, it's, we get, we can also do a step and then figure it out, because you know what, I wouldn't know that you couldn't do certain things, and that if all of a sudden, a whole bunch of people are falling, I might say, maybe it's better perhaps of gas leaf blowers than people falling, you know, there's, so I don't think we have to either go, you know, we have to be the leader and say that, you know, it's essentially irresistible, you know...
This proposal is not suggesting that we...
It's completely bad, it's completely bad.
It's not at a hundred percent, and during a certain period.
With exceptions.
With the exception.
Okay, continue, continue.
It's banned for most of the year.
Yeah, and then next year's...
Yes, which, which, most of the progressive villages in town, their legislation is impartial limits, and that's what we are proposing, we are proposing in the middle of what is out there amongst the river towns and the other community, there are nothing, yes. But of the progressive communities that are doing that, and hopefully we pride ourselves on being one of those, particularly environmentally, and we have been doing that, of those legislations that are out there, we are suggesting taking the best parts of each, and looking at what the problem areas that have been brought up, and deciding those out, and creating something that's in line with the strength that the other river towns have. And to do that, there are three basic things, one is the ban of great gas blowers during the warmer months and the heart of the wintertime, and, you know, the dates, which dates you choose, you know, you can bring up an exception, and if it's weather warmer, or this or that, this is going to fall then, that may be, that may be...
Yeah, that would be perfect, but they have exceptions to that, so...
Yes.
We're already banning gas blowers during the same time period.
Right, so we are suggesting that...
But you're suggesting that we not allow multifamily houses to be accepted?
They're banned for everybody, we can't touch school district, that's not our, our purvey in the community, uh, but for everybody else, that we ban it for them, uh, everybody is treated the same. I will disagree that there is, there, and I'll pass a handout here around, uh, this is, if you remember, the letter that you should receive, uh...
Is that like, is that the one we just saw?
From Lisa.
There is a commercial equipment, I don't understand.
That is not at the level that this equipment is.
That'll be changed.
I think you need to do a little more marketing.
Uh, but, but, uh... How many volts is it?
With the manufacturer, that they've been green...
Green workers.
Yeah, I know the owner.
Okay.
I know the owner, you know, I've had extensive discussions at conferences, the still model, still superior to their model, and he acknowledges that.
Okay.
But anyways, it doesn't matter, there's equipment out there, and there's, there's equipment, many manufacturers' equipment, so...
And, uh, the contractor letter that you got from Lisa Green is referring to that.
Right.
And suggesting that this equipment can be used effectively.
A little lost here, if your first point was banning gas blowers, is this part of that first point?
Yes, we're banning gas blowers during those periods, but we're not banning electric blowers.
Right.
And we're not banning battery-operated ones, and we are suggesting, as our contractor letter that you received in Lisa's email to you, uh, is adequate for commercial use during the banned gas periods. So, given that they, those are adequate, we can ban those periods for everybody, and still have safety, you know, these will blow the acorns that fall early off the sidewalk. Uh, we don't need to allow the gas blowers, which are polluting, and much louder decibels, the, these machines are rated decibels, your standard backpack gas blower goes up to a hundred very quickly, uh, and when you add a couple of them, it even gets stronger. So, uh, first item is have that banned, second item is it doesn't work to have anything without a limit on the decimal level, uh, all the time. There's two problems with blowers, one is their, you know, environmental problem, and the second is the sound level, and that's perhaps most disturbing to most residents, that's what I get comments on all the time, and what's driving the, uh, the objections from the community is the noise level, uh, that's constantly had people, so many people are worried. I can't work when the crew from the condominium development next to me comes in there and does all their stuff, uh, it just doesn't happen. So that's the second level, most of the other communities that have any ban at all have a specific decimal level.
Actually, it does.
Sure. How about that three of them, and there's only one that had a decimal level, it's so arcane.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I have a bunch of them here.
I think for the same reason, it's, it's, they're so hard to, so hard to enforce, I think, but actually...
If you, if you like, I'd be happy to give you the list of the ones that do and the ones that don't, and...
I'm familiar with it, but it's not, it's not accurate to say that most of them have decimal levels, because I, I'm not saying whether it's a good idea or not a good idea, but the truth is that most of them don't. It could be, it could be elsewhere in their law, it's not in the lead blower law, because it's kind of...
It is not in the lead blower.
Right.
Yes, yes, and, okay. So that's where it's...
No, yeah, 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 but there was a, there was years ago, that was put in all of the codes, you know, there's, there's standard code provisions defined in all the codes, and they all had that, but I think most places have found it, it's not really, maybe, because maybe it's more enforceable now, I don't know, maybe because of...
It is more enforceable now.
But the truth is, the fact that it's on the books does not mean that...
But I mean, you think about, like, something like speedometer, that they use to pace cars, and laser, you have to get those certified.
That's right.
Like, you can't just go, "I'm like, at sixty-eight," and, you know...
No, no, so if Mark were, if Mark were to do it, and called, was, say, "Look, this is over," then he's gonna have to get it certified, or he doesn't have to, yeah, so it's practical.
It's not simple, because I think, I think we would all, I mean, and it's something that I think it's not, we're not saying we're not gonna look at the decimal thing, um, but it's the practical use, we can put it in right now, you can't have anything over eighty-five ever, but if we can enforce it, it's kind of, you know, silly.
That's my argument, and eighty-five is insane, but if you said it's got to operate at sixty-five, by the manufacturer's specification, that's what's, you know...
Yeah, these, these items specify a...
Our standard, whatever, but, you know, I, it's, I don't see that it's necessarily enforceable, but it's certainly something that, that acts as a judicial guideline, and maybe if we did have licensing, where you hand it out, one of the things it says is, "This equipment must be certified to operate," at that point, you've notified them, they have to be keeping their, buying equipment that is low noise, so I think there's a value to it, I just don't know that we can assume the police are going to be enforcing it.
I, we're not even suggesting that you're gonna go and find somebody that your decimal level was two points above the level, I don't think that's the point, it's just like the, the, the dog walking, and the dogs off leash, we're not out there to try to find people who are walking off the leash.
I just agree with that.
There's a couple of them, a couple needed. There's a few dogs that absolutely need it, but, uh...
If I get one more kid that's attacked by dogs in the woods, it's...
Okay, let's talk it out, I mean, the point is, I think...
The air point, I think, is well taken, so that's the point that we are trying, right, it's a guideline.
So that's the third... But it's a guideline, and it can't be written into the law, it's a law. Well, sure, maybe they...
It could be, but...
It is already written in the...
And you don't want to enforce it.
Yeah, well, that's the, that's the point, Larry, I mean, you could, that you can put it in, but if you're not gonna enforce it, it doesn't matter.
Well, you had a licensing scheme, and you notified them, and then you found somebody that was operating without license, then they would not even be in, uh, you know, contributing the licensing function, but they, most likely, you could look at the equipment they had and said, "This doesn't even have, uh, isn't operating or is strict at within our guidelines," so you could do more, you know, it's...
Yeah, it may not, it may not be worth spending a lot of time on, because the other, is, I know, because I was representing some guy, he, he had a house across from the Trump office, a couple of years ago, and he'd get all the money in the world, and we'd be calling every morning, "I was out with my thing, and it's over this," you know, so I called this, the village, they, they'd send the cops out, by the time the cops came, they were done doing it. I, so it's a prac, I mean, it sounds good as a practical matter.
I do think that's...
It doesn't, it may not work, so probably, there's probably other things you could focus on, that might be more...
Well, I think, like, missing the point, let me just try this one more time, we're not necessarily talking about operational enforcement from the idea of having a meterizer, you're just saying that you've got, just like you say, it's gotta be phased to EPA or later.
Right.
It's gotta operate at a certain level or lower by the spec.
Well, sure, I, I think, I think that's easy.
That's different than...
That's what we're asking for.
Trying to enforce it.
Exactly what we're asking for.
So, what you just say in the paragraph, where you said, "Don't gas leak blow but EPA exhaust standards," and is operated, of course, with manufacturer's instructions, and you could say, and is, you know, won't be louder than whatever.
And it's a, it's, it's a specification, there's no, because you can't, all you can do is read what something is favoring.
No, yeah, it, it's different than putting a decimal level in, in the code, something like that, because that's...
What are you saying, after putting a decimal level in the code?
It's saying you can't use something that's greater than, it's that, you're...
But that's one...
See, because this says here...
It is actually, right, you're sixty.
This says sixty decimal...
Right, so, and I know it's a logarithmic scale, and we're talking sixty-five, you know, and when you buy a refrigerator, that's six, you know, cubic inches, and then consumer, what's the number, it says it's only two-thirds of what they say they are, how do I know this is running at sixty, when, when we just had them run, and it ran seventy-five or eighty, I'm lost here.
We don't know, but it's a...
Whatever you, the customary distance says.
Yeah, that, that's...
But wait, where is it, where...
So, so this says it's sixty decimal...
Oh, high acceleration, around sixty decimal.
And wash your hands to seventy-five.
Everywhere you read...
Yeah, no, I know.
The measurement's bad.
Yes, because it's, it's a standard...
Well, okay, let's go on to your point.
Okay, our third critical point is registration of landscapers.
That's...
And we see that as, uh, we're, to put all the onus on the homeowner there, we think it's a little too much, uh, that's great if they're, they're out there and doing their own thing, but the reality is, most homeowners are at the mercy of their landscapers, uh, because they've got the one they got, uh, and they're not gonna change it to a new one next week, and, you know, there's gonna be, their neighbor has another one, and, uh, that's what they do. The easiest way for control to happen at all is to have a simple registration process, and, uh, it's not even about collecting money, uh, it's about having the landscaper acknowledge that these are the rules in the village, and you are permitted to work in the village if you follow these rules, you use this kind of equipment during this period, and, uh, the courtesy rules also would be a good idea, that you don't blow the leaves in the street, uh, that should be part of this registration, and I don't think we need to wait a year to come out with that.
Oh, they're so good.
We, we, we could add that in, uh, and again, it's, I, I'm worried about the immigrant community on that issue, um, and I think if we don't have that, and we get a complaint, or if somebody is concerned that the noise is too loud, and it's affecting their children's party or whatever, and we're calling the police, then you're sending the police out there, and you're dealing with the guy who's running the issue, he's not the problem. It's...
The sticker on the truck.
It's...
The truck that you go to.
Right, it should be going to this sticker on the truck, and then if there's a problem, you go back to the owner of that sticker, uh, rather than be arguing that the person who doesn't speak English is just doing his job, or trying to do his job the way he was doing, which is probably improper, uh, but, uh, you go back to that person, and then you have a lever, you can threaten that person with removing his license to operate in the village, which he will do. That was a paling field amongst all of the contractors.
So, so can I speak to one of those issues now, or are you basically done today?
Uh, the, the final thing is, we would like to consider a process to go, over the years, the next couple of years, and many places are, to ban gas blowers entirely, uh, coincident with the increase in battery technology that will allow that to be fully commercialized, uh, and the environmental science, if you step one toe into that area about the problems that gas blowers is, this is not a science.
I was gonna watch, just...
It's, it's really, really serious, uh, the problem with... So, uh, so we would like to be, uh, this is my question. Okay, Connie, your question?
Oh, sorry. There was...
I was close to a hundred thousand.
My, my isn't so much a question to you, Dave, but it does respond to parts of what Kim Royal and Mark was, I'm saying, that I looked into myself years ago, uh, of a lot of issues, I'm coming forward with the idea that this registration process could be a very strong... And what I would suggest, I, I don't know, so in here right now, but this is an idea that I think has traction in that, and part we have the official program, it's a most needed shared service among different villages, Tarrytown has a system in place, obviously, since nineteen ninety, I couldn't remember when I went there, but this was one after nineteen ninety, uh, uh, where they, they have some kind of form, and some kind of registration, and some kind of sticker on a truck, uh, I mean, somebody would need to discuss this with their village administrator and see how it's working, but if, if there's good feedback on that, and it, it plays into the, the courtesy issue of getting, you're, you're getting the, what do they call them, the green state, their laws, you're getting them to come into your, your village where you have, um, shared services, and somehow you, you make that, maybe different villages actually handle the process for three villages, we do it for two years, and Tarrytown does it for two years, and other villages does it for two years, uh, and when they come in to register, they, they get this information, you know they've read it, and it has to do with various things, about courtesy, um, it has to do with what kinds of equipment doesn't meet those standards, like you, you know, you're agreeing, you get the register, you're agreeing not to use X, Y, and Z, and you can change that as, as time goes by. So, I don't know, I, I realize that it's, when we looked at the, Larry, you sent us that, right, and I guess it was also on Claire, um, Claire's, uh, letter also, I'm seeing more and more solutions through that mechanism than I thought before, when I looked at people, where there were two people that spoke in the village about wanting some kind of... And I think now, with many people, there's so many, there's so many, so many, certainly the noise part, it's a, we heard once and now, so...
The attitude.
What's that?
The attitude issue.
The applicant issue.
Oh, yes, and we heard that, we heard that line recently years ago. And I was trying to get all the details I really need to read more about the. As there is air pollution, and what did the PDA say about this? Smaller than asthma and compromised elderly people. So that problem. I know we have the things to read, but I can get through them all. But that being said, I think I would like to investigate that if other people think that that's a way to go. We would have to find out how well it's working in Terry Town and think about whether it could be a shared service.
See, that's the next step after we get our boot strap out, we try to make their shared services day one. I think if we see enough power in registration to get a control handle on usage to get, I like the idea of a single sticker on a truck. That way it's very easy to know if you don't, you know, if someone can see if it's there or it's not. It's very easy when force will or not they're operating. And it's minor, even, to say, here's some documents, you expect you to conform to this. So I hate to sound that way, but the only way you can make Spanish language material with L A L E. Which you'd want to do, you'd have to have Spanish born, you'd have to have Spanish heritage. We have to have some leverage, some way of getting training, because there's ones who. I'm doing it myself, but my friend.
Well, this is just a commentary we hear from the landscaper.
There's not a.
This is impossible. We want this easily, we want the people to assimilate and abide by a culture of rule and law in a country. They have to assimilate, just like they get a driver's license. They shouldn't be driving a car unlawfully. If they're going to operate and run businesses, we can't be so fearful that we can't have them conduct. Civilized to the way we want to live in our communities.
Well, I think so. No, I don't want to hear you say that. That's what Larry's saying. I understand what you said, by register, making them register could be intimidating.
Well, we can find a non-inimidating way to do that.
But right, so I just. Just to extend that, I think, you know, we continue to work on how we understand our police deal with undocumented individuals. And we strengthen that and we keep on top of that and we don't have to. I don't dare be realistic. What are you going to say to the kind of contractor Larry's talking about? Hey, don't worry about it, you know, we're not going to ask your. I mean, there's no way you can totally prevent that. But if you don't make it a secret that we have gas legislation about this, so.
As I was saying, you know, I have a level of intimidation walking into the building.
Yeah.
I'm on the board.
Have it be online. Let's say they don't have to walk in the village.
Well, that might not exactly answer the problem.
But I think we need to know how well it's going in Terry Town.
Well, I think we need to do something because we can, you know, we can make, we have this issue and we can make it this issue. And we can say we're not doing anything until we have all of this and we know and have mastered all of this. And I appreciate, let me pull this back a second. I appreciate the fact of when the Green Policy Task Force first sat here, one of the first things she said, she said. Thirty minutes that we begin a process of registration and we give a rollout periods that we inform people that registration will be necessary. And we make a particular effort to reach out to the smaller contractors. And I don't think it's a big deal to translate a form into Spanish. You can do it online. Google has a way of doing it. So that, and have the courtesy cards absolutely be part of the handout and those should be bilingual as well.
Pardon me, what you said about the register, think about it for the future, is that what you just said?
Just roll it out, let's start it, say that everybody whose operating shall be registered by a date, so that they're not expected to be registered tomorrow.
That could be suffered in this loss.
Right, and that we add, we take out the one handheld act back to go, you're concerned that one of them isn't going to allow us to continue mulching our leaves. So let's take out.
The state that actually, you can continue mulching, but the collective noise length.
You just have to slightly lower the noise level three times as long, so that may not make sense. And then add something in the about the decimal level that we want to conform to, to the decimal level. Then we can move ahead with something that begins to address the things that people are most concerned about and allows us to take further action as we evaluate how it's going.
Can we step to your except for the ten A, one through five? What are the exceptions now? I just want to be sure I understand.
You're adding an individual, which isn't on there. And I, when I started asking about individuals finding out that they have electric ones more than gas ones anyway.
It's not going to be that big a deal, the people that don't, you know.
So then I think you should have a date by which after that date.
Let's see if there's complaints about the gas power from individuals.
Because the definitely individuals who do that are very clear about saying I use it for twenty minutes. So I would exempt individual exemption one time, waiting for thirty minutes.
And it turns out that there's still a nuisance that we'll look at back.
And when, you know, if we get.
I think you're almost no people, individuals that own a battery.
That's what I'm saying.
And you have backpacked blower.
Okay, so you know, actually, we don't have a problem.
Yes, I do, I've had several people, I mean, I think there are two letters that said.
I would.
And then I asked, because they don't actually have gas power.
So that's not going to be a big deal anyway.
So we also put an introduction on this to say that what we are aiming to do is to adjust the level of noise pollution. And that we are, that's the purpose of this.
I wouldn't put that in the law, but you can do it in your resolution.
Okay, you're in the resolution whereas, if that's fine.
Janice, are you saying that you don't want to put a limit on one gas power overflow during the season?
So it's used as many as they're using during the season.
During the season.
On the bookends, the bookends.
Yes.
We're going to make it a shorter amount of time.
That even on the very small.
I know, you can enforce it.
If it's two weeks, you can do two week blowers, so that the three weeks you can only do one.
Part of much trigger. Community, you know, Spire Park and around here. Spire Park's the area by the tunnel?
Yeah.
So you got these big hillsides with great big tulip trees. You can have a small house, but a couple of massive tulips and oaks where you got a big broad swathing property with prairie-like grass. You're not comparing that to apples. Those small properties are the ones oftentimes are so tight congested with the big trees, all their canopy trees, they got a lot of volume. I don't know how to answer your question, I'm just taking the.
So in those places, I want to really limit the amount of gas. Larger property cannot restrict it to only one gas. Isn't that the case?
Right.
But then what if you have. Really cut down on noise.
Could one have a, have an electric one?
They always have an electric one.
It can always have the electric one, that's a thing.
I'm not in favor of not having any.
How about changing instead of only one, how about no more than two?
We are.
H two C.
H two C, this is only one handheld.
Double C.
You mean if the property is greater than half an acre, you can have two?
No more than two, unless the property is being cleaned is greater than a half an acre. So in a great, it may be my ultimate limit.
So it's only two handheld or backpacked leak blowers may be used at a time unless the property is being cleaned is greater than a half an acre.
Correct.
You might, or maybe we don't want to have then more for the. Maybe limit of two.
It was about how big. I mean, the smaller properties, you know, the spire park. If they would like none, and we're having one allowed, is to something that anybody's going to be supportive of in those high.
More, it's real. All of us line up each other, all agreement?
Then once, it's there.
We're trying to figure a way, it's hard to do it by neighborhood.
Don't properties vary?
On car track.
Yeah. I live in Spire Park, that's what I should say.
Yeah, that means to me, that's.
Well, you said there, what are you comfortable with there, you comfortable with?
I was comfortable with one, but I'm not home when my, when my lawn guys are there. I know that there's more than one right now.
But that's the problem. And that goes back to that question of, well, it goes faster if you have eight. But, and it takes a lot longer if you have one. But in terms of the noise level for the neighbor next door. There is, I'm not sure they would prefer it quick but really loud.
Yeah, but well, one and two. I mean, it's going to be louder, but.
Yeah.
That seems to be the point where the balance is.
Yes, there's signs for that.
Nate, Nate just agreed, we'd rather have it loud for ten minutes and she might rather have it less loud for half an hour. We have to figure out what's a reasonable guideline.
And it doesn't increase the decimal level, the science, actual science of it. If you have two or you have four, you got to go maximum volume, but it depends on how it's spread out. You have two in this quantity property, two in this quantity property, then you can broaden the sound wave out. But why here, the language going, it's going to be loud, the science of that, it's eighty decimals or ninety decimals. It's first.
You can go two start and. Correct. Well, that's a question that I thought was interesting, which is on the larger properties, do we.
Absolutely.
Should we enforce limits? In other words, should we just have a limit that at any time, no more than two handheld backpack.
Because he made a very good point that the larger properties.
One, can we have push behind? I'm just asking about.
Probably not everybody has push behind.
Okay.
And space two.
So what is, where are we at then? Can we just be very clear about what changes that we're asking Mary to make?
Janice is bringing up the individual being allowed to use for a certain amount of time. I don't know how easily that's enforced. And I was just going to say, I just, if we're going to allow that and we know most have electric. Can we just put a sunset date on individuals with being allowed to use one for a certain amount of time? So people know they should be changing over to electric. Why can't we put a sunset date?
Again, if you think that there's very few people that are using it now, I don't think that, this is another solution looking for.
Right, that's right, it's not written at all, I didn't want to put it.
I wanted an exception for them because of that handful of people, you've never got one complaint that my neighbor is using it constantly. We've never got a complaint, we think that most of them use electric anyway. So for the people, I have had a half dozen people say, I use it when my friends are coming over, I blow up my patio for five minutes and I'm done.
Right, so that's why. But they might be happy enough to move to one of that.
I don't want to tell them to go buy a new.
Well, then give them a sunset.
Those homeowner level.
That can be a later point, I think, I think Ronnie is right on this.
Those homeowner level ones are typically a Home Depot model, much quieter. They're probably two thirds of the volume of the gas homeowner ones that the typical homeowner would buy than the commercial one. Typically quieter anyway, two thirds.
Sounds like you even know the difference between the electric and the gas. I mean, it's more annoying to study.
Okay, so you want actually added, this is, I want to just tell you guys.
It's going to be possible.
But I just, I'll do it. Well, yeah, I can, I can do it, but let me make sure I understand.
Yeah, I don't understand yet.
Yeah, I know, it's wrong. So you're saying that to A, it should somehow fit in with those exceptions, that individuals can use their own blowers once a week for twenty minutes?
Certainly.
Now, sorry? They're not in the marriage. Okay, individuals can use their blowers once a week.
I don't enforce that.
With their.
I think it's possible.
Well, it will be, if you're doing it six times a week, your neighbor knows that that's against the regulations.
But if nobody's going to really complain about them anyway. Do you want to want to say that?
I don't think they're ever going to operate in the evening. You want to have at least the same. And we should do the same time limits as in one. And the thing is, I remember when I was a freshman.
So we got that one.
Does everybody, okay, does everybody? But I'll not. Okay, Tom has it.
We've heard from two contractors now that June one would make a whole. And both of them refer to the same thing, which is when things fall off.
But the other communities that we got this from don't do that.
That's a mistake.
I have dates on a little bit.
We don't want to use that now.
But Terry Town has similar.
And what about?
June one.
Isn't it possible to? Yeah, you know what? I saw on the NACOR two walking and there's no band, so. Right, yeah. In my neighborhood.
Well.
Does not, June first isn't a non-cogged day. Kind of the.
What we do with it is we hit the most restrictive periods and I've heard enough to think that perhaps that was.
Most of them were June first.
Yes.
Okay, with June. September fifteenth, do you change? Okay.
So it would be September fifteenth.
Okay. We were taking out in school. Okay.
But what about two? Are we still, are we putting in? You see, here's what I would like, if we're going to get some teeth, here's what I'd like to say, just fight the bully, get electric equipment for your crews. In other words, make an exception because they wanted to be able to do something, but, you know, it's true, they'll have to spend a few hundred bucks. Or get two of them, they'll spend five hundred bucks.
Thousands of dollars.
That one, I'm looking at these first.
The green, the green companies, the two major companies, I don't know if anyone here has spoken with the pride communities and knows about pride communities. And the two companies that have worked in pride communities, I found it, they start at the backpack blower model level that's somewhat comparable to the gas, it's twenty-three hundred dollars. The, any handheld blower, any decent power that would give you maybe a duration of the day is six hundred dollars or above, done the research.
Okay, so the point I'm going to make is that we're enabling the, if we are really just trying.
I would, I would consider sunsetting those out because to me, it's again, they're using, it's not an individual, that's a.
they're using, uh, it's not, it's not an individual, that's a, they're using companies to do it for them, for the most part.
So then that sunset.
I agree, we should sunset.
So, this one we can sunset.
But to me, again, you're, you're not affecting one resident that has to go out by, you're affecting, and we don't have.
Sunset it six months next fall, I mean, or, you know, next spring, what is, we have to.
Have contracts.
Yeah, but they, they.
And again, they come in and they say, well, you know, this, last year it was $9,000 to do half moon, and next year it's gonna be 23,000, maybe we say, okay, you have to sunset it out, because you haven't got that much, or something. Hey, to me, it gives us time, we don't, we don't have to, if it turns out we're wrong about that, you can always fix it, it's very important about legislation.
Sunset it out to six months from when?
Well, the, the contract periods.
Are here.
That's a good point, for January, January 1st, or, when do you set your new contracts?
Season starts when, March 1st, March 1st.
Is that when you have your contracts in mind?
I don't, I don't have physical formal contracts.
Okay, so why don't we say March of 2018?
But you know other people's.
This is already 17.
I know, so.
It's incorporated with their client, it could be Jan 1st, yeah.
To 2019?
You could do it, uh, when there were particular.
Realistically.
Maybe December 31st, 2018.
Okay, fine.
That would sunset.
All right. So that's.
Have it sunset the exceptions to using gas blowers on multifamily condos and that's something.
Per, permanently.
No, for the, for the.
Band period.
What about the old tennis clubs?
Right, well, that's, that's, we're going one at a time, just so, so we can be.
All right, so we got the sunset.
But I, I think quite a lot, I'm here, there, a year and a half, do we need that much time?
Well, no, yeah, because contractors get renewed at different points, and we're talking in some cases about having to buy additional equipment, which we'd argue be somewhat excessive.
And also.
Well, he's saying that, that that's not necessarily the case.
Well, maybe not, but we've got a lot of different kinds of places.
Oh, condos, condos vary, they could be September, they could be, yeah, condos, of course, parks.
Let's, let's make a decision.
All right, okay, sunset is December 31st, 2018 on two, and then on three, is it the same?
That means, again, it's really, I mean, if we have two parts that happen, we have our parks, including. But, you know.
But we're operating in that regard right now, so we, we need to be.
And I think we should also figure out what they, you know, if they have to, you know, hire three guys to rate it in the summer, it's close to, they don't have to beat it, and there's rather ones, because most of it isn't, the Santa Cruz isn't massive. And again, I don't want to hamstring them, so that's, you know, to me, it's, it's.
They, technically, your DPW craft crews, because this was my experience with the multing program, they would be receptive, it's, it's a cultural length, they can be spoken to.
I would like to follow up on that point with them before we, because I don't want to, again, if there's two guys that do all the park stuff, and there's, you know, the DPW guys that do it on overtime, what does it really mean to us? So maybe you can follow up on that, because again, it's a very community.
Well, isn't there, isn't, isn't there just the one going? At the top of, of.
It's very, it's not.
Right on the edge of the, the.
Only using gas, so if they have a few electric options, they may change their opinion.
I think what we're trying to balance is what we can accomplish realistically immediately, and changing the culture, providing information, providing options, if you look, think about two, you can do it differently.
You should talk to them, before we set.
I, I agree with you, Brad, I think that's.
Before what? Before we pass the law?
No, just, just on the hundred feet piece.
No.
Yeah, so, I think that.
We should follow up with Greg and Joe about the hundred feet. Right now, leave it at the way it is.
Don't sunset that.
No.
And anyway, coming at the often tennis clubs, you can't use it within the hundred feet. So I think it's protected, but.
Okay, when we, when responding to.
But we're still.
May I say, may I say something about your DPW crew? They actually.
They tend to be going in another direction.
With the right quality purchase of machinery, myself, with the right purchase of equipment for the DPW crews, with their type of testing machine in the summertime, they might actually prefer electric. It's simpler, just squeeze the trigger and go, and they have access to battery recharging, cycle things.
Okay.
It's easier than fighting with the gas. They, once you get accustomed to it, it's easier to squeeze that trigger quietly and go.
We'll follow up on that.
So, so when this went into an emergency, we got, we're comfortable with that, that means, because some of them say declare the emergency, right, you have to have like a, a, or some official declared it. I'm just pointing it out, so, because I know.
You know what, if it gets abused, then I, if it gets abused, you could change.
We don't, I don't need to define emergency. I, I think, I really think we're fine.
Now, if we have snow.
If it, if it's, you know what, if it's an exception that ends up swallowing the rule, then you revise it, and you be more specific, that it has to be.
Snow and, yeah, yes, right.
I mean, I just want to say from the. Okay.
Okay, wait, on, 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 on B, there was a suggestion made by at least some members of the board the last time, and I have it in question whether you want it. So walk behind leaf blowers may not be used unless the property this being cleaned is greater than 1 hectare acre, and something particular was more, or somebody suggested, but they can't use it within 100 feet of the nearest address. What do you want that in there?
I don't think I.
I brought, I, some, okay, take it back, everybody, somebody brought it back. That was Alan, Alan, and they're, they're right next to. I brought, I only took my notes based on 400 percent. No, but I, I, I brought it up as something I thought.
Next to smaller residential, and it's only a changing fest.
Again, because of that courtesy, and, and.
Just what I had in there or not in there? You get the way it is.
I think we should put it up.
You're gonna have people writing on the tape maybe.
I'm in the middle of that.
I don't think.
Okay, so then C is changed to no more than two handheld backpack leaf blowers they use in this online.
We have to say in total, so we don't think it's two backpack and two handheld.
No more than that total.
Otherwise, we're just giving, we're giving four, I don't know.
It doesn't say gas leaf blower, is, don't we want gas in there?
It's not only for.
No, because it was specified for gas, so.
All of these are only about gas.
And whose gas?
Oh, tennis, all gas. Tennis, okay, you have to clarify this again.
The next one to say it.
The section, the section heading is yes power leaf blowers. The following restrictions apply to the use of gas.
No, I know.
And D.
That is now gas power leaf blowers, it's like.
I know what you're saying.
So maybe we need to take all gas.
Well, we're not necessarily talking about.
Can I be done with that on the EPA thing too?
No.
There are essentially two models that are used by almost all contractors. It's about 85% of one model alone. They all qualify for heat, I mean, you can put it, it just goes in print, but they all qualify, they're the toughest standard, emission standards from California. They're all PA compliant above, you know, California's above, you know, national EPA, they're all compliant, so that's a given already in place. They're not sold anywhere, uh, these models, otherwise.
And also, we know that for West after, uh.
Wait, how much is the size, you have to leave it behind as well.
Okay, good, so, so C the only change is not, no more than a total of two handheld leaf blowers, actually, or device leave it the same unless the property is being cleaned as great as one.
Yeah.
Who's, I'm sorry to do this, but, but if, if it's one equal, I mean, that's like, is that big, if you're okay with whatever number? Property's a little bit bigger than 1 hectare acre and.
Sorry. I was reading.
Well, Brad, I think that we should, is it based into 65?
Yes.
Father said 65. 65 is conversation.
And I was reading there that since 1995, all the law, the, the.
Yes, and, and the caveat is, it depends on where you're running the draw, right?
They're all 65, why, why went 10 to this?
I'm not 50, I'm not ready, and.
You go to the.
And the other thing is, we're, what, you know, they don't tell you what draw setting, that might be just idling at 60 dB, I've never seen that, that's what I've called that.
And you know, and I, I wonder, see, when you're, if you're looking at the specs, you know, somebody said, you, you might look at the specs, or I guess you could look it up online, but do the specs tell you that it's, that this one says 50, it's on 6 decimals? Is that effective?
No, they don't. It's ANZ standard B dot 175 dot 2 is what it says here. It's whatever they, however they measure it. The ECHO Quiet line, since 1995, is the maximum of 65 decibels for ANZ standard B dot 175 dot 2.
What they show what?
Um, but do we want to believe that 65 decibels open until Monday? Or we put it in for now and we'll follow up on it, kind of?
Well, I think you need to just point out that there's industry standards for measuring it.
Yeah.
I don't think we have to recreate the industry standards, I think we just.
No, but, yeah, okay, I'm just a little concerned about, I'm, I'm fine putting in 65, I'm fine putting in 40, whatever, 65, but I'm concerned because you just listened to this electric one, and it was over, and so you're. Right, you were within 50 feet of, but I don't know that when, you know, when you look up the specs of something, and they tell you the decimal level, where it's measured, is it measured, you know, like right next? Do you see what I'm saying?
That's per the specifications of the manufacturer, right?
Yes.
So, why don't we, why don't we follow up between now and Monday?
Uh, what the.
About what the, yeah, the ANZ levels are.
Okay.
On commercial, to find out, yeah, and then pick a middle level or something. I'll, I'll, I'll follow up on the decimal levels. I'm sure Mark's already Googling it.
I, I'm not, not this weekend, too. But I did know that 65 is a number that I've seen all the place in reference to.
Yeah, I, I see 65 all the time.
And I think it's because this one, their quiet line, it's 65.
And, and the consensus is, we put in nothing here about beginning of a registration procedure.
No, we want, that's another thing, that's a new thing, we want to reg.
And we're gonna put it in here? No, I don't.
Or could we do a separate local law to register? I, I don't know, I don't know. Because that's the, if we change, if we add a registration to this law, I think we're gonna have to re, I don't think these changes are necessarily measured.
I think they're enough, you have to accomplish them, don't you?
Oh, yeah, to me, it's, we're kind of in that career.
So, but, but just tell me this, is there consensus, given the, the problems that, that.
It's a registry.
Putting in general, we like the idea.
We like your registration, we like the idea of having decals that are displayed in trucks, we like the idea of having handhelds that give you proper, we like the same, we like the.
Explain, well, that's, in a lot of cases, you don't need to have the detail of the procedure, you just need to have.
You said they have to be registered. Right, but I think you have, if, if you want to insist they be registered, I think it has to be in. Oh, but Terry Towne, but, but are we all agreed that it would make sense to get some feedback from Terry Towne about the, how it's going, and what the problems are, and how it's going, it is or not? Oh, it would be a good idea, but you're gonna have that by my head. Okay. Well, I mean, I'll put it in there then, and then say, you know, just understand that as we go forward, that's the way we're going to proceed, and just as we learn.
Is the registration best to be in this law, or is that, it's a bigger, to me, this is sort of a bit, only, you know, we, because it's really registering.
Well, I mean, the way, the way we do, what if you were gonna put it in here, remember that thing says, um. The following restrictions apply to the use of gas powered leaf blowers, and then you would say.
There's quite a few, a lot of stuff in that, this is a huge. There's a lot of stuff in the Terry Towne code about what, what a great contractor is.
Right, yeah.
There's like six stuff, six.
Okay, I mean, you guys want to do that, it's fine, but you, you're not gonna have a law Monday, no.
No, but I'd rather do this right, there's, you know. I don't know, I mean, if you want, you know, we're, we're gonna just kind of have to come back to it again, so.
So, how, why don't we, we're in consensus somewhere in the past, the one outstanding piece is registration, we could, um, that might, if we really want to explore how it's been going in the other community, time and labor, we can either amend this or.
July 17th.
I'm sorry.
July 17th is our next regular meeting.
So we can't.
After, after Monday, except that we have special meetings.
It is a little odd that you're trying to put a registration in something about gas leaf blowers.
Because it's not just, I think, the worst point, it's not just about that, it's about. Well, do you want, yeah, well, then I guess it's, do you.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
Are you saying that all landscaping, well, then, yeah.
I'd rather have all landscaping, but you don't think they're going to blow it in their life.
That's what Terry does, when they have green contracts.
So that's why we do that less separately. And we also need to have a face in period, because you, again, you can't help you if you have to register by next Monday, but we want these things to get going in.
I think the village officials meeting group would be a good place to have that notification.
Anyway, I really don't want to be abstract, whether or not this.
No.
Get information, but. And I wouldn't give up this shared services idea. I mean, it may be not a good idea, but I'd like to explore it.
Just one comment on that, I think that's a fabulous idea. The little problem is that all your legislation is going to have to be the same, or you can't have the registration be the same.
If they go to Terry Towne, that's a nonsense.
Right, so maybe we're, maybe the two have the same, and others, I just think back, let's not give it up.
No, but I just don't think it's an order, so I mean, there's, if there's ten landscaping companies that want to deal in Irvington, then go ahead and.
Well, yes, but it, it's, it's also something very supported by the state, by the governor, and you get a lot of credit for doing things for services, so if it happens to work.
Get a grant.
And it's, you know, maybe it's a money saver, maybe it's more convenient for landscapers to have the same roles in five communities. So why do you want to smoke the law to take it back? Do, do you think? I think it's to be known as, well, that's gotta be re-known as, so, you're. One, oh, you can't re-known it for this meeting?
It's July 17th.
So, to be known, yes, the next meeting is July 17th, um, and then, and then. Okay.
Potentially do it on the 12th.
Okay, um, so then you want to make it effective September 1st, or? Yes, okay, so July 17th, you want to do it August 1st, okay. You notice it, we do it on the, the work session, and then we start the law going into effect August 1st. Is that what you just said?
Yep.
And we got to get, get a, have two people to notify them, what the.
We have to solve facing, because basically you're, 30 days, four years.
We use to blow in the leaves all summer long, that has the ball, the first, they can't load them anymore.
Yeah, and then you, unfortunately.
I mean, you could, you put in your mayor's letter, start, you know, hopefully, you know, you might as well give it up next, right, make, make friends with your sparrow work.
Friends.
Okay.
And what's the penalty is, right? I almost think, I mean, I'm always, you know, the hanging judge, but I always think we should increase the, I mean, to me, again, if it's fifty bucks for the first time, I teach full lessons, but if you ask a person to do it multiple times, I think you should. Raise the upper limit at the G fifty, I don't know. But only on the subsequent ones. Just to raise the maximum and then the judge can decide if he wants to do the maximum or something else for now, or I think it's. I want to find dog blockers to take you.
So Ryan is, Ryan is suggesting something on the penalty, upping, upping the penalty, um, the subsequent penalty amount.
Did not greater than a piece? Not, did not greater than, not less than fifty nor greater than?
No, but that's not this code. We're stuck to ten, so we're hundred and two fifty.
Hundred for the first. Hundred, oh, hundred for the second, yeah, and I thought, you know, thousand for the, and I, no, like, not more than a thousand for the subsequent ones. Just in case it's like a really egregious one that like, you know.
I would be cautious about putting two significant penalties until we actually have a registration process. I, I just think you need to be able to have that.
And you know, it's, it's not an incidental penalty, you know, and then, but if you find that people are just doing it.
This is a strange.
Yeah, yeah, I could just do that. Of a way, now somebody said. This is a per personnel blow, per blow. I don't know, I mean, it seems to me that.
Is that penalty thing confusing?
Sixty, six, so ten.
No, we have one that had wasn't talked about, which is field point wants an exception.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Because it doesn't fit into the definition of. Cluster residential development or attached one family dwelling developments.
No, but they want an exception to have no restriction. On their time.
Yeah, one is in a not fitting to one of those. I thought they could design their.
They want a restriction to, to be able to do it at other times that.
I thought that's what it was, but I, but Mark is saying that they say they don't fit it, that they're not, they wouldn't fit into the multi-family and cluster residential.
Do they really not add that, right?
You can be multi-family without being M F. This is multi-family, this isn't like capital M F, it doesn't say in the M F districts. I don't think there's ever been. So I don't think that's an issue. I agree with Larry, I thought that they were really getting at, they're saying they didn't want any, any restrictions at all.
They did, and I, I mean, to me, I think, I consider them multi-family, so I think it would be covered.
Oh, I know what they said, that they needed more than three hours a day.
Yeah. It's a hundred and three.
Or else it's gonna take more, more days.
Three hours a day.
The crew comes in there, starts at one end of field point and goes to the other end and they just roll, so three hours would really. More for them to have to go back. Destroying the days, yeah. It was, it wouldn't work.
I don't know.
What does it say to you?
Nine AM to noon on Friday.
Two.
Oh, okay.
Or do you want to say we threw one day for, you know. How, how, what if you start on Monday, you get rained out by twelve o'clock and then you have to come back the following day? You know, it's. We sleep the way it is and they have to. But yeah, I think so many places, you know, when people are blowing like every single blade of grass, I still get it.
Something they can't always get a little lower.
I was just.
They just spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. How great. Exactly, so there's a two thousand dollar backup pool, it's not really that expensive to make up.
Okay, we have this.
For like seventy bucks.
I'm excited about a registration process. I think that was good six years ago when I went to Terry Town and still think.
Now, if you have a historic district design guide and recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Tim, everyone.
I'm on the one, one minute.
There are two, there's two parts to this. And everybody's doing their working draft.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Tim, I'm looking forward to your input. I'm courtesy.
I'm gonna, well, I guess most of them are very good, Tim. I'll be done.
This?
Come on, sir.
Are we going to? Obviously.
Yes. I'm almost done.
That's what we're.
I'm telling the staff.
Then the other, the other piece is, and we'll talk about that afterwards, it's somewhat easier, I think, after the local law, I mean, amending the code to provide that appeals remain out to be disordered. I, I don't think it's very controversial for people. Okay, so this, I was just different things I heard at the meeting and, you know, click that here and there.
I think before we start, I thought you did, for the amount of input we gave you.
Yeah.
You did. Coming up with this thing, whatever it is.
It's not gonna be out of joint about.
No, she, she said that that's all just a few little possible changes in the diagrams is what I have in mind, but.
All right, so do you want to hit the ones that we were having?
But we want to start from the top.
So I, well, there are a couple ways to go, but you can, I, I, I use, why don't we go. Yeah, I use numbers by the paragraph.
Anybody have any issue with the first whereas?
No, I'm, okay. Not till I get to eat.
Next one.
Right.
Next one. Okay, next one, then we're in two thousand.
Moving along.
I think we give a context just in case.
Oh, I think they know.
Working on a resolution.
Oh, all right, so, right. Oh, oh. So, right, so Mary Ann, what do you say? What, where are we? Yes, what, what, um, we talked about, and I think it makes some sense, is rather than amending the zoning or the A R V law to refer to the guidelines, that the board just adopt the guidelines. And, but it's important in just adopting the guidelines to also state what their intent is in, in, in adopting the guidelines, how they want them used by the A R B or the public should expect. So, yes, we talked a little bit about it, then they gave me some things that they wanted in, so what I did was I, I just drafted what's gonna be a pretty lengthy resolution that will go along with the guidelines. My recommendation would be that it maybe go in, you know, with, not, they're not part of the guidelines, but at the beginning of it, sometimes you see letters introducing things and that's what this.
And there's no change.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't think we really was here except for.
Not a one trick pony, come on.
See, the only reason we're okay with.
Girls just asleep. So we're at the fourth, right? Twenty thirteen, I believe, last week.
Wait, you know what, you guys, I have, I have a couple extra copies if you want to share them. You're gonna have to sit together. Okay. All right, where's in January twenty fourteen, everyone's okay with there? And then where's the designation of the national register applies to the main street area as a whole rather than to any individual house and.
Historic district. I think I repeated or something. I think it's really important for a really good. I could see it. Where's the historic history committee consultation. Here, historic district design guide requested that the board was to adopt it.
And then I think this is coming from Connie his issues, right?
Yeah, just some wording, I mean, I basically, and I wrote out the document and I made some copies, so this doesn't mean that it's any more important than anything else, but it's in red is what I changed. As a possible change. And it's, I thought it would be more, more time consuming to try to read my scribbles. Okay, so, um, here's, here's a possible change addition with some question marks for A. Where the Board of Trustees has reviewed the design guide and believes that it's the special of the varied and mixed historic styles of the region. That was kind of an important thing, that they're not pure forms in general, along with its, their suggested approaches, best practices, but considerable when, by renovating, repairing, expanding buildings in historic district. Will assist both property owners and historic district and design professionals who work for them, and then that's the same.
But I like the changes, but using best practices.
Like the term best practice.
But I like the idea of replacing guidelines with, with best practices.
Okay.
What were suggested? Yeah, I feel like I wanted to see what were prepared.
Oh.
Yeah, let's take.
Right, that's. No. Well, was repaired. The guidelines actually.
Right, that's true, it's the other way we took out repairs.
Maybe I'm wrong, but wouldn't you say the guidelines still plays up with repairs?
Yeah, I mean, this is. They talk about it.
I was getting all jumpy about repairs because.
Cause there's that whole.
Yeah, but it only has, it only, it will only go, repairs will only go to the A R B if they go there now.
Right, right.
And for the repairs that go there now, here's garden, so I can. He has a, but it is different than modern, because there could be repairs that don't really modify, so I, I do think that's important that it be. But wait, no, we're not done. Um, best practices, is it believes this, along with its best practices?
I like suggested approaches better than best practices.
All right, let me read the sen, you have the sentence there, all right. I, I don't care.
Okay, I'll change guidelines to suggested approaches. Okay.
Okay.
Now, what about the varied and mixed?
I think it's useful.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary, but.
It's not necessary, but I was trying to make a point that, you know, it's not pure Victorian, it's not pure this for the most part.
We're driving that point home.
We want to block that argument.
Okay.
Property owners.
Okay, how about the, how about the next one? Mine, I didn't have anything. Is the board trustees intends that the design guide serve as a useful tool, not a regulatory doctrine?
I would just say that that's the first time that you're saying A R B, so you may want to say architectural.
Look at you. I like that.
Point.
That's the first thing I said. And should we say useful tool or as a reference tool? I sort of like it more than.
I mean, how about a useful reference tool?
I don't think that. It really is.
All right.
You can't just look at this, really it's more than rock works.
Okay.
We like it.
But it's not.
We just said it's a fourteen head.
Right.
Where at?
Ten, yeah, okay, so ten I have. It's only the design guide, but you know, it's for many buildings in historic district, don't be using the modified original material. It does not recommend that buildings be restored to the original material. It does not require or even generally recommend because of practical and financial reasons that the building. Because you could, I mean, there could be a recommendation, but it's. I don't know.
I'm trying to get a situation that wouldn't.
I like, I definitely to require or even generally recommend. I don't know if you need me because of, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's.
You have an employer, is this not.
Does not require.
That's the point there.
Yeah, I think that's, that's.
Okay, or generally or even if it's not required or even generally recommend.
Yeah, and leave out because of practical.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Eleven. Eleven, I had some, something in eleven, but it starts out the same.
Oh, here's, here's the A R B.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, excuse me, that's right.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I can just say. It's Larry Cross.
Larry. Where the Board of Trustees intends that the Board of Architectural Review Board A R B use the design guide to preserve the character of the historic. Rather than to treat each building, except those now or in the future designated as local, state, or national landmarks.
Are there now any landmarks?
No, there are, there's Village Hall and there's the, the Life Hall and.
No, I know.
And they put us there in Oswald.
They're on eleven.
Yeah.
I, I, I think the only part I don't like that is the, or in the future part, so if you said designated as, cause to me it's like, well, that, you know, if you say, well, that could be a historic landmark in the future, you know what I mean, like that, that part of it.
Yeah, if you say except those designated and stay whatever.
Yeah.
And they become.
Then they.
Okay, all right.
I don't even see what this statement, I had a good, I had a problem, I didn't understand the purpose of this statement.
At all, oh.
To preserve the character of the historic district as a whole, that's fine, I understand that, rather than to treat each building in the historic district as historically designated.
Right. Well, I know what you're trying to say, that is that you're not trying to treat each building as though it's a landmark, do you know, right? But then you add this part of that, except landmarks, then it becomes.
Well, more than that, it's like, you are treating individual buildings, individual community buildings.
Are you not? Are you not?
That's very, that's.
And that's like critical.
But what, because it's gotta be the character of the neighborhood?
Not, no, because it is the character of the neighborhood, it's the entire district that's, that is landmarked, not any particular building. And to the extent that building contributes to the historic character of the neighborhood, that's what's gonna be preserved.
That doesn't mean the Secretary of Interior Standards applied in preserving buildings in the district.
That, that's, that's the thing.
Then it sounds like, I, I, yeah, I guess I understand, but it didn't, it sounds like that's kind of dictating what Connie was adding.
But you could separate out and become a category. If it's, if it's not that important.
Well, what consequence does it have? Because who, does it matter what our A R B does when you're dealing with a building that's already listed on the register? You know what I mean?
Right, we wouldn't be dealing with that because.
That's gonna be a higher, that's a higher standard.
It would still be part of.
We'll still have to look at the whole world.
Yes, the character.
But the standards that guide what happens to that building are not guided by us, they're guided by.
It's right, it's not how.
And also Connie, you know what? We're talking about the design guide preserving the character, and the design guide is directed at the district.
Okay, all right.
And when it comes to individuals.
This point, the only reason I was mentioning is this point is, is I think so important because of misconceptions.
Right, that this.
That to, that to confuse it.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. I'm gonna fall on it, sort of. Think about.
I don't think you're losing.
No, I don't think so either, so, um, twelve and fourteen I have combined, both deal with cost, but in twelve, it's also with preference.
Well, you know what, Connie, I'll tell you what the difference is, is that twelve, the board of trustees intends that the recommendations be as cost to a property owner. The fourteen says the design guide specifically states emphasizing the cost thing. It, it's, that's what the board of trustees intends, and it's saying, and that is in fact, it's. In the design guide because it specifically says, and that's really, that's really. And that's really, that's really there, just one second, that's really there more for clarity. And that's a.
No, because thirteen refers to the best.
No, I'll tell you, I'll tell you why it's in fourteen, I know, originally you have it after that.
Okay.
But the problem is, is whereas in doing that balancing.
Which one are we looking to talk about?
We're talking about the second one on the page and the fourth one on the page one.
Yeah, because it seemed to me that the order was, maybe fourteen should come right before twelve. Read it through once, let's see.
Mary, I have a trouble with the term balanced against the cost too, it almost sounded like they were counter to each other. And I, you know, kind of go over.
Balancing with?
Yeah.
How does it, if you put fourteen for twelve, how does balance not work? I don't understand.
You do with that balancing, because balancing, balancing is. Back to the board of trustees. Balancing is in twelve.
Fourteen, twelve, thirteen. Whereas sometimes the. Fortune comes essentially from the ticket and where the board of trustees. To me, it's always better.
Yeah, okay, yeah, fourteen, twelve, thirteen. Well, you were saying something about thirteen.
Balanced against.
Right, I just thought the term in, what is it, twelve?
Twelve.
Is the recommendations in the design guide be balanced against the cost, I think it sounds too oppositional.
Yeah, right.
I know, I know, but it's not a negative term.
Should be, should be balanced.
Yeah, the reality on the other side is.
I would just repeat.
Balancing is exactly the right word, it's the practice. Practice now followed.
The board of trustees intends that the recommendations of the design code be weighed rather than balanced.
But it's against.
It's still against.
Balance, balance is. And in fact, what we really want is the balance, just like when you grant, when you're granting variances or not. You balance the decimates to the property owner against the, you know.
No, I think, I think it's okay.
All right, as long as people, as long as you can understand.
I think that's okay.
People can understand that you need to say it that way.
You cast it entirely. Yeah, you balance it this against that.
That's fine, is that's common.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't even.
And I have an apology.
Design guide two.
Okay, I'll, let's see, my number, you're fifteen.
Mike, I have a fifteen.
Okay, just a, can I try my last thing and add a reality about this?
Back to balance?
Yeah, what about, I was saying, what it, it tends to make sure the design.
Balance in a close with, in relationship to, okay, I'm going to suggest we hold this over. Anybody has a really brilliant idea, the concept is fine, so.
I mean, everybody's comfortable there, we can have. So is everybody up there who isn't doing that balancing, the board of trustees, the ARB give more? See, that's why I need the balancing in there. That, that intends the ARB get more, that would be listed as contributing building.
Yeah.
And Connie, well, this is fifteen, whereas the design guide does not require any additional approaches or appearance before any additional land use boards beyond what is already required. It's.
You're just being more, or a lot of the more PR.
It's a little more PR.
There's not a historic district.
Right, yeah, it's not like in certain places, they create another board and use the.
Some say, but some.
Or you, you and I just make all the decisions.
Well. Okay, so I'm all right with that?
I like the change.
Well, for any additional boards, not necessarily, all right. Well, they do come to our, for the appeal.
That's.
Like that, if we have to go to one or the other. All right, all right, all right, all right, they got land use. Okay.
Okay. Where's the goal, the design guide itself should be the process where ARB applications in historic district by advising property owners early in the process with factors the ARB will be considering.
See, what I was thinking about this far.
You slipped my, my nineteen.
Is.
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen.
Oh, I was thinking we were. And it's like sixteen and nineteen, but sixteen.
Tell me what's the I front number. Oh, okay, this is what I just read.
Honestly, we can explain it to help speak. I understand that ultimately it can save a reading, but it, some of it's there impacts building structure as well, which means it's back to that feedback room that actually.
He loves me.
Is it, he, he's saying making him work.
No, just take out ARB.
Just application.
Take out the board ARB. I thought the design guide helps feed the process of applications.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, because there is a, there is an implied feedback that could happen there.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, then what do you say with the, with the last part of the sentence?
Well, by advising property owners early in the process with factors the ARB will be considering, that still belongs there. It's more of saying, maybe, you know, maybe it'll speed things up, it's a planning, you know, okay.
Can't no one get a problem seventeen, right?
Well, yeah.
And this is good, resolution by the board, we've talked about that.
So then the last was the second to last paragraph.
Yes, the rep, rep number.
How he's nineteen.
It's, that's the latest date, dated June fifth. Um, I tried, I did it a little differently here.
Okay.
I was trying to, let's say, fourteen.
And then it can be modified only by resolution, the board of trustees, what I think is, that was somebody suggesting, I think it's.
Honey, it's something we're doing the editing, it's a.
But it has to be by us, yeah. Yeah, the, the historic district just can't decide to change it and give it to the ARB, you guys have to know.
It's crazy, it's dreadful.
What?
It was a good idea.
Oh, God.
I did.
All right, this, this was trying to reflect the, the many ways that it gets included and checked. You said the same thing, but, and maybe you, Mark, you know more about how the building department can all communicate, but don't they have a checklist?
I don't know that they do for the ARB, don't you have?
Yes.
Yes, there's a checklist now?
The ARB has requested a checklist.
Oh, but you asked. I went on, I went and looked online and what he's got.
Yeah, no, we don't, I know, we don't have yet.
It's actually called ARB review required.
Yeah, so I think we should just leave it.
Okay, but the idea that there'll be a nice little checklist coming along.
And then on this last one, are you guys okay with, are you okay with, with actually distributing an entire property?
That's funny, right, I have a problem with that.
Okay.
What are we talking about? Do any copies printed and distributed or what? And how much is each one got, smile?
I don't know, I have a wrong one, so.
If it's available online and copies are available.
I think we should have copies available in the building department, maybe for free if you're contributing buildings.
So you may send a letter with a link?
Yes.
And a letter with a link.
How about, how about with, if you want to request you a hard copy, you may do so.
I like that, I think that's, otherwise we're gonna.
Right.
Because most of them.
You know what, we don't, we don't, we can just say be made available or publicize made available.
Then you can decide how you want to do it.
Because I think, yeah.
Publicize made available, like that.
Real estate offices and so many make available, so not only.
Yeah, widely.
It's just to be made available is better than.
Widely available, widely available.
Well, then it'd be publicized and made available to all property owners.
I don't know, we should just.
And the illustrated design professionals.
State designer.
Well, as to.
I think that's a term.
Real, other persons. And design professionals, well, realtors don't work on properties in this, or.
They can alert new property owners.
Um, wait, wait, we, be publicized and made available to all.
Owners in our store.
Party owners in historic district and realtors. As well as to design.
We're good also, generic, we'll go out and buy, we just distribute it and figure out what that means.
Yeah.
And they have it almost preferred to be generic and that.
Well, I think it is, but say.
Oh, made available, oh, not.
Just why do, why do you treat it to be available?
Well, you know what, though, I mean, I think one of the things we wanted to clarify is we're gonna let everybody in historic district know about this. I, I think. So I, I mean, I think now, I, I, I think since it's affecting them, I think that was affected, it's two hundred.
Okay, we'd be helpful, yeah.
Sure.
Comments?
Yep.
Comments?
Any specific thing or? It's lost on me.
What we just talked about, oh, about the distribution.
No, 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 it doesn't seem like, like a whole resolution.
Yeah. Doesn't seem like we totally missed something.
I think it's workable and we'll meet it as a group tomorrow, so we'll talk.
Yeah, that works.
Give you some feedback, but I think it's acceptable and there's a long way to let, I think everybody.
Okay.
And I think it's.
But you know what?
It's why some fear that we.
I think the board is ready to vote on it. Oh, yeah. One day, so if you come up in the meeting and say we want this changed and that changed, it's kind of late.
Especially if there's a showstopper.
Well, we are meeting tomorrow.
Great, that's wonderful.
So, okay.
It's definitely a showstopper, it's balanced tomorrow. If it's just, if it's more tweaky things, we can wait, but if it's something really.
Yeah, I think we want to know everything, please, do you?
Yeah, the timing on this week, so this is important.
With the tweaks, I'm, I'm making second. That changes to whether you guys.
We often write here, should consider all tweaks. The only question I have is, so where does it appear that the appeal goes to?
Oh, that's, that's probably, there's no need to put that in the resolution.
Nope, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a bigger issue, not just for.
We're gonna discuss that right now?
Yeah. Five more minutes.
Five minutes?
Brand new legislation right here, still smells new.
I'm on the press.
That new legislation smell.
I only have one extra copy, I need it back. What is this? Let's, let's introduce you guys, I have, yes, one, the things off, one thing I need to tell you.
Yes.
I hope it's good news.
Okay.
It's never good news in the country. Are you gonna?
Sometimes it is, actually.
Okay, appeals, okay, so, all right, findings effect is the same as it was if we fix that five years ago, okay. So then, pretty much the difference is here, instead of zoning the board of appeals, it says, it says board of trustees. Um, I did, I did, though, the one thing I added, it's not in now, right now it says within twenty days after the findings effect are filed, every person can take an appeal, but maybe they don't have to, maybe they don't ask for findings effect, so when does their time start running? Within thirty days after the ARB decision. Um, or within twenty days after the findings effect. If findings are requested away, it's supposed to be in the talents, or the findings of. Okay. So you just added the if, findings are requested, this is what I'm.
Put it at the default timing place, is what's happening.
Right, um, and I took out the business about the standard of review, because it's not going to be your standard of review anymore. Um, and just say the notice will be by serving a written notice on the village clerk. Now, this next section, the two, which is kind of one, it's almost word for word procedure for an appeal to zoning. Appeal, the notice, um, the only thing that's, yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, the only change I made from the current provision for appealing to the zoning board of appeals is it says that they're necessary ten days notice, but thirty days. I leave this one.
Right, the work is not accepted, you're in a Texas, like, obviously, this is.
But see, but that's that, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't want to change something.
The two hundred feet seems like.
What does it, what do you give it up?
But it seems like a lot, you know what, the thing is. Twenty. Historic, there's gonna be a lot of notice.
I don't know why we have to.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I was gonna suggest you take out the recorder, five hundred feet, I don't know why that would. So I've been talking about, take out, yeah, that's what I'm doing, I'll take that. I don't know how you feel about the two hundred.
Well, the five hundred feet, it isn't just for the historic district, it's for everywhere now, right?
Oh, that's true.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
This is for all appeals, not just historic.
So this is appeals, and appeals from the ARB, you guys have this?
I gave a copy.
So you should.
I gave it to.
Oh, okay.
So Rick, it's, it's saying that all appeals from the ARB, not just historic district appeals, but all of those, that's pretty much all assessed.
In the past, they've had to do notification. So the appeals process gets to be expensive. I mean, you're talking about certainly some anonymous notifications.
No, right now, so I, I'm assuming that ARB, you know, they've taught the same, same reason, I mean, AR, appeals and ARB decisions to the CBA, I assume are handled over the same setting, but I, there are only been a few, I guess there were.
Well, they wouldn't, they'd have done like the.
Right.
It's true, but the planning board notices too, if I could just. The two hundred feet, okay, planning board.
The two hundred, it, it's not a, actually, it's close, no, it's, it's on the small.
Help, it's just like.
Okay, and then it would also need taking this section out of the, um, section we just added recently, because the, the, we're going to the zoning board of appeals even though they already do that.
Right, but now, so it's now that all.
Just takes it up.
All that works is that.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's true.
That was the only time we ever wasted time on this board.
All right.
See how we did that one?
I hope this, yeah, I, I don't know this much about appeals, but I'm just gonna do it.
So how do you get the word out? That might be interested. Major change in the resolution as opposed to the law. I think it's a lot, right?
Yeah, I mean, we did, we did, we did anticipate there was gonna be a, I mean, the reason we decided to do it here was it was a work session, it was company side, and, and, and it was listed as a gen item.
Proceeds. Public hearing is still looking at the law, but you already have. Procedurally, people who walked away from that meeting know that it's continued to.
Yeah. Now, what's the difference?
That's a lot of law.
So that can get.
So you're gonna, you're gonna close the public hearing.
And open up.
Basically, not adopt anything, then go forward.
So you have to announce this part.
Oh, yeah, but you're not, you're not gonna vote on it, you can't, you're not gonna vote on it, you're just gonna announce.
We'll comment before we adjust this resolution.
Well, I think, I mean, this resolution is based on the voluminous comments.
But, but, but I think, I mean, to me, why not? You know, and I don't think there's gonna be a whole heck of a lot, to be honest.
I don't think people should comment unless they're down.
Well, that's the problem.
Yeah. So, so if you're, if you're, you're. So, so if you just, you're, you're gonna comment here, you do the thing, and then it's three minutes comment, it doesn't really.